Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled Eureka City Council meeting this June 18th, 2024. Let's see, what I'd like to do is first welcome everybody. It's nice to see you. Some familiar faces, wonderful. And start with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And did we have a report at a closed session? Could you turn your Luna?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No report at a closed session tonight.
Thank you. And if we could get a roll call, please.
Mayor Burgel.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Okay, and if all who would care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we are going to begin this evening with a proclamation for Dump the Pump. And is there someone here to receive this proclamation? Oh, come on forward if you would. Thank you. Councilmember Bauer, if you'd do the honors.
Welcome. In recognition of Dump the Pump Day, June 20th, 2024, whereas the city of Eureka recognizes the importance of sustainable transportation options for the well-being of our community and the preservation of our environment. And whereas public transportation plays a vital role in reducing traffic congestion, improving air quality, and promotion promoting economic vitality in our city. And whereas Dump the Pump Day observed nationally on the 3rd Thursday in June encourages individuals to leave their cars at home and instead utilize public transportation, biking, walking, or carpooling. And whereas the city of Eureka is committed to supporting initiatives that promote alternative modes of transportation and reduce our reliance on single occupancy vehicles. And whereas by participating in Dump the Pump Day, residents of Eureka can help reduce carbon emissions, conserve energy, and contribute to a more sustainable future for our city and planet. And now therefore I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the city of and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim June 20th, 2024 as Dump the Pump Day in the city of Eureka. And we urge all residents to join in this observance by utilizing public transportation, biking, walking, carpooling, or other sustainable modes of transportation on this day and beyond.
Would you like to say a few words? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm Jerome Kuriazzi, planner at Humboldt Transit Authority. And have with me here Jim Wilson, our maintenance manager, and Carolyn Aguilar, she's administrative and finance assistant, and Dan Scales, who's our operations manager. And really appreciate the recognition. June 20th is a national Dump to Pump Dump to Pump Day. And so transit agencies in cities all around the U.S. are recognizing this. And then also to help encourage this, HTA has free fares for 17 and under all summer as well. We also have free fares all summer for seniors 62 and older. And then also Arcata is running free fares for everyone for the month of June. So definitely encourage everyone to get out there. And thank you.
Wonderful news. Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here. Did anybody else have anything to say? You're all good? Okay, we appreciate you. Okay, our next proclamation is one very special to me. This is the 2024 Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run proclamation. And if you guys would all come forward. In recognition of the of the 2024 Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run in Eureka to support Special Olympics Northern California, June 20th, 2024. Whereas Special Olympics has been changing the lives and attitudes for over 56 years. And today is the largest worldwide sports organization for people with intellectual disabilities in over 200 countries. And whereas law enforcement officers from around the world have logged over 500,000 miles running in the Law Enforcement Torch Run to support Special Olympics since 1981. And whereas 2024 marks the 27th anniversary of the Law Enforcement Torch Run in Northern California. And we will be celebrating the Humboldt County Torch Run on June 20th. And whereas since 1997, law enforcement in Northern California have raised over $20 million in support of athlete programs, making the annual torch run the largest public awareness and grassroots fundraiser for the Special Olympics. And whereas the city of Eureka enthusiastically supports the efforts of Special Olympics to deliver essential health, wellness, and sports programs to promote social inclusion, to end bullying and discrimination, and to join people with with and without disabilities together to compete as teammates in united sports. And whereas the city of Eureka wishes to inspire greatness in our local athletes and comments the efforts of our Eureka Police Officers demonstrating their moral strength and courage as guardians of the flame in support of Special Olympics Northern California. Now therefore, I, Kim Burgel, Mayor of Eureka, the city of Eureka, do now hereby proclaim, oh, my words here, June 20th, 2024, as Torch Run Day, and encourage our community to join with all participating law enforcement personnel throughout Humboldt County in support of Special Olympics Northern California.
So I want to I want to thank the mayor and the council once again. This is our third local torch run. And as the mayor mentioned, Special Olympics is a charity of choice for law enforcement throughout California. This will torch run just began. It will make its way through over 30 different counties and 180 different cities on its way back to Sacramento or from Sacramento, excuse me, around. And the Summer Games is where it will culminate, which is at the University of Santa Clara this year. So it's a big event. This is our third. We are here to thank the city of Eureka. I want to thank really, we've had support from so many different departments. I really appreciate the support we've got in the city manager's office and the clerk. And we have really had a successful run at this. And it will be this Thursday at 11:30 Thursday, starting at the Adorni Center Amphitheater. And we'll make our way through Old Town and then we end up at the Living the Dream Ice Cream. So we have the best run in the state because we end it on an ice cream cone. And so everyone here, all of my athletes and others will be getting a free ice cream cone, thanks to Living the Dream. So with that, I would like to introduce each of the athletes. Greg, Henry, Owen, Wyatt, Aleah, and Teresa. And these are the superstars. This is just a sampling of the superstars. So. And most of all, I want to thank the police chief and his staff and the department for all their support. And once again, it will be a fun day in Eureka on Thursday. So thank you. Want to get a picture? They all dressed up, so.
Thank you. Yes, Thursday.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. Good to see you. Thanks, guys.
My heart right there. So I do have a few things under my mayor's reports. I'm slowly getting back into work. And so I did get to attend the gathering to celebrate work beginning in the Dias Park. I've also been on a committee to judge for the League of Cities, the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence Jury, Enhancing Public Trust Ethics and Community Involvement. And there have been some really excellent ideas. The cool, the neat part about that is that whenever I look at like those awards and read through the the language that they have, so many of those things the city of Eureka always is already doing. Maybe just a little enhanced, maybe a little different, but it's really it's really a wonderful opportunity to learn more about other communities. And we did have a, there's a tie, so we're still working on breaking that tie. So I'm not going to disclose anything quite yet. I also had the honor of giving this commencement speech at Redwood Coast Montessori as my son graduated from high school, which was a total gift. The city of Eureka was recognized with a certificate of appreciation by the Sri Shin Moi Oneness Home Peace Run. It's a certificate of appreciation. This happens every two years. It's an international relay race, four piece. And I've been involved in that since they started coming to Eureka. It's probably been, I don't know, 10, eight, 10 years. So that was a wonderful opportunity. And then, let's see. Couple other things that are really, I think are important. So I've been getting a lot of calls recently about the condition of our of our trails and of our Old Town and Downtown with people living outside. And I want to remind folks that the city of Eureka has a plan for a camp already in place in locations that are available to make that camp happen. The thing that we do need is a nonprofit to step up and run that opportunity. So if you have friends or if you know anybody that would love to take on such a project and benefit our community and our community members in a very helpful and positive way, please contact Miles or myself, or excuse me, contact the city manager or myself. And then I, one other important thing that's happened in the last couple of weeks is that the city of Eureka has hired a new maintenance worker for the trail. He's been on the about two weeks, working very closely with EPD to mitigate problems with camps and those types of things out in our green belts. So things are happening in our city, positive things are happening in our city. Sometimes they're a little slower than we might like, but I really appreciate the dedication of our city to move forward on things that are going to support all community members, regardless of where they live or where or how they dress. So I appreciate that. And so with that, we will move on to our first. Oh, we're gonna actually move on to public comment. Is there anyone from, oh, excuse me. I got so excited, I lost track. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. The city council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act and city council, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So are there friends here tonight that would like to speak in public comment? Welcome.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Jason Pierce. I'm a field representative for the Carpenters Local 751 here in Eureka. I'm here to speak on the benefits of using Carpenter Union Signatory General Contractor for your Eureka Corporations complex project. Using union labor has significant economic benefits for our community. Union carpenters earn fair wages and receive comprehensive benefits, including health insurance, annuity, pension, dental, vision. This ensures a stable and motivated workforce. The wages earned by union workers are often spent locally, supporting small businesses and stimulating local economy. Union general contractors pay prevailing wages on all jobs all the time, not just when mandated by contract documents. This consistent practice ensures fair compensation for workers and promotes a standard of living that benefits the entire community. Prevaling wages attract skilled labor, reduce turnover, and enhance productivity, all of which contribute to successful completion of projects. Union carpenters take pride in their work. They are accountable for the performance and they are committed to a successful project. Our local union members are often forced to travel long distances for work, which means they spend extended periods away from their family. This project presents a unique opportunity for these skilled workers to work closer to home, allowing them to spend more time with their loved ones. By employing local union labor, we support family stability and improve the quality of life for our community members. We have been actively partnering with local tribes to provide their members with opportunities to become union apprentices. This collaboration offers a pathway to the middle class for tribal members. However, without job opportunities locally, it's challenging to sustain this progress. This project is an excellent opportunity to put local union members to work to give new apprentices a chance to start their path to the middle class. In conclusion, the benefits of using union carpenters for our projects are clear. From superior craftsmanship, stringent safety standards, and economic benefits, community investment, union labor offers unparalleled advantages. By enabling our local union members to work closer to home, we enhance their quality of life and reinforce our community bonds. The commitment of general union general contractors to pay prevailing wages on all jobs all the time ensures fair compensation and high-quality work. Our partnerships with local tribes offer new apprentices a pathway to the middle class, which this project can significantly support. I urge the city to take this into consideration when conducting interviews and selecting a contractor for the Eureka Operations Complex. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Welcome. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Steve Harris. I'm a field representative for North Cal Carpenters Union here in Humboldt. I've been in the constructive trade for industry for almost 37 years. I decided to become a field representative to give back to my fellow members. This organization is the reason who I am today. It has changed my life for the better over the years. It gave me a career to provide for my wife and my three children. I began the journey by enrolling into the carpenters apprenticeship program that lasts four years. I had the privilege to learn on the job and in the classroom, sitting with certified instructors throughout those four years, all while earning a livable wage to support my family and being debt-free from a student loan. Healthcare was provided for me when I began this journey also. As my three children were born and have grown up, I realized the importance of having healthcare and benefits along with earning a livable wage. I believe anyone with a family can agree that having healthcare is a necessity. Over the years, I have commuted all over and only worked close to home a handful of times. I can speak about the triumphs and the struggles that this construction workers faces daily. That is why I believe the labor standards language of the future projects is crucial to as a type of guideline for the contractors to follow. Specific language like a livable wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, and even a local hire would set the standards for contractors when they come to bid jobs on the project. In conclusion, I ask the question, how can you, as the city council, better support the working class here in Eureka? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Welcome, Mr. Parr.
Hello, good evening. I wanted to say I was happy to see the the thing about the Special Olympics and whatnot. I have an autistic nephew myself, who his his mother was told to write him off and put him in a home when he was a child. And instead, they worked with him and now he's a successful country singer. So it can be done. These these kids don't need to be thrown away. I also have a one of my talented writer on my writer's site that is an autistic young man. And we're not young, he's 40 now, but he's well involved with the Special Olympics up in Canada. And yeah, and I admire these kids. And so, yeah, that was that was good to see. On from that, I've talked to a lot of people who are upset and asked me to come down and say something. I have, as I've said before, my backyard is 2030 Park. I have the only property with a gate that actually opens onto the park. I've been cleaning up the mess out there that gets dumped on a regular basis for 13 years. I've been running off druggies and gang members. Kind of keeping an eye on the place. And so I was somewhat dismayed when the name change was forced on us last year. I can understand, you know, your desire to raise any reference to those filthy white colonials who raised the money, bought the property, donated to the city for a park. But but to force a name change on us from 2030 Park to Dias Park, which is where the cypress are parked, and then to come in and cut down over half of the cypress trees in the park. That was some of the most outrageous foolishness that I've seen you guys pull off, and that's saying a lot. I mean, how, I mean, who 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 made that choice? Was that you? I mean, who decided to change the name to Dias Park, where the cypress are parked, and then cut down all the cypress? I mean, doesn't that seem a little bit insane? Maybe you should go back. And this is nothing against the Wiat. Like I said, I've several times, I have a lot of admiration for how they handle their stuff. I've recommended it several times. Let you all retire and let them take over the city council because they seem to do a lot better job than you guys do. But maybe you should go back to them and find out what the Wiat phrase for where the cypress were is and rename the park again.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Parr, I wish one of the students would have heard you talk about the country singer because Henry does have a music career on his on his path. So anyway, thank you for that. Sorry. It's inappropriate. Okay. Is there anybody else from the audience that would care to share?
Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
My name is Stacia O'Neil. I know Kim. Hi, Kim. I, first of all, I wanted to say I'm very nervous. I don't want to be here. And this is what happens with democracy. You stand up for yourself and you come and you speak. I spoke to a, I reached out to a council member and I really laid it out there who I was. And because I think we're kind of getting a bad rap, thinking people think we don't want housing. And that's absolutely not true. We're not related to any anti-housing groups. We're not. We're not doing anything against housing in this city. And I reached out to a council member. I won't say her name, and she totally ghosted me. And that was really painful, I just want to say. So I don't feel like this is a friendly city council because I thought she would be the friendliest to approach. And I didn't approach Kim because I know we kind of have a relationship and I didn't want to have any issues. So I don't feel this is a safe place for me. But I'm going to go forward anyways. I got homeowner's insurance on my home to protect myself from fire, floods, earthquakes, things. And we have the design committee to protect protect homeowners in this city from bad development. This is what happened to my neighbor's home. When a bad development happens, the overhang is on their property. The house was sold immediately because lack of privacy and lack of sunlight and lack of respect. And it became a rental. It got sold to an investor, became a rental, and now it's a disgrace. This is the blight on my neighborhood now. I don't want to see that happen anymore. I'm not against housing. We have two multi-housing units in our neighborhood. They're wonderful. I would love to see some senior housing. I take care of seniors. I would love to see housing for disabled adults. The general plan said we're going to spread housing around. Let's do that. Let's put something to invigorate my neighborhood, not three of these. Because that's not invigorating. That's kind of insulting and not respectful to historic homes. We came down here to the design committee and they protected us and they protected you from liability. When they decided that the proposed development would be detrimental to our health, to the welfare, and material injurious. We have a lot of stakeholders in this city who've been realtors for 40 years who have said this will be materially injurious. I just want to give you a quick timeline of what I've been going through. Since we got denial, I turned around. Since the denial happened to ACGC, I turned around in these chambers and I said, oh, let's work together. And he said to me, fuck off. Yes, I am not fibbing. Okay, I guess he doesn't want to work with us. I went home after work and I found a city worker with a camera. He's lying when he said that he didn't send someone over.
Your time is up?
Thank you.
If you want to send that an email, that would be great.
I would love that, Kim. Thank you for your respect and your time.
Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in public comment? Hi, welcome.
Great. So my name is Dan Reed, and I own the property at 709 West Boone that Stacia was talking about. The biggest issue we're having right now is the fact that in the way it states in, and she took it from me, is that these buildings, as we incorporate these into the city, shall not, thanks, babe, shall not, as she wrote a second ago, be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or material injuriousness to the properties and improvements in the vicinity. This isn't true in our case. Just happens to be because the size of this building is going to completely take away all of our western sun, basically turning our house with two north sides. That's not responsible. I have letters from real estate brokers, one of which, a 40-year Patty Sterns, who said that our property will lose 15% of its house value because of the size of this, because the fact that it's going to take all the sunlight and the privacy of our whole entire property will be gone. And so where we're not opposed, and I am absolutely not opposed to building, everybody needs a home and then some, and we have a huge crisis. But the the design should be taken down where we don't lose our sunlight. And therefore, we're not going to lose any of our home value. This is all we have. To take away 15% of our home value is just not right. You know, why can't it just be single stories and this redesign happen? You can still get five units in there from the size. But the fact that we're going to lose so much and probably will have to move, because I can't live with this basically a cruise ship next to my house. That's what it's going to be like. It's 30 feet tall. My house sits at 18 feet. It's going to dwarf it. You know, we're going to have problems with mold. We already run D hums 24/7 in our house and gather tons of water. If you take all that afternoon sunlight, which these Victorians were designed for, they were designed to warm the building at the end of the day in order for not, whether it be mold or just the warmth, you know, back then they didn't have central heating like we're fortunate we have now. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that while this building is so important, it's like there's some places where maybe a huge mass of five-plex just doesn't simply fit. It's just being crushed in. Maybe the city should have had in the part of their plan that if they have a single story with that five-foot setback, it should be a single story next to it. It just makes sense. We can all do better. I just don't want to lose everything we've got and lose our home that we've owned for 18 years. Makes no sense. So I see only have a couple of seconds left. I think I'm heard and I feel I'm heard. It's just, man, this is a tough one for us. We're we're facing on losing everything we've put into this house. And it's heartbreaking. So, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thanks for being here. Is there anyone else in chambers who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Great. We will close the public comment period and move on to.
Mayor, if I may, if I may, just for for a moment, I want to
Sure.
Point of order, I want to make sure that is it Ms. O'Neil and Mr. Reed?
Yeah.
That you're also aware of a planning commission meeting that's next week related to your project.
Yes, we are.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure that you you're aware. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to public hearings. We will begin with budget adoption with Director Millar, Finance Director Millar. Welcome. Welcome.
Good evening. Tonight's first public hearing is on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This is the last step in the budget process. Just to go over where we've been, we began on June fourth. This is when we introduced the budget. We went over the city's major funds. We identified a budget deficit in the general fund, the city's main operating fund. But despite the deficit, because we have healthy reserves, there's no reason to worry at the moment, but it is something we will monitor over the course of the next fiscal year and thereafter. Then we conducted a budget study session that occurred on June eleventh. The main points in this study session were about the general fund and then Measure H. We went over some Measure H uses, and because of Measure H, about seventy-three percent of the growth in the general fund has gone to public safety and to improving our streets. So tonight, we are going to quickly go through the remaining major funds by department and division. I'll touch on a few other budget items, and then it will be up for adoption. So to begin with our major funds, not including the general fund. So in our water fund, Fund Five Hundred, we have a number of different divisions, mainly public works divisions. I do want to point out something or a change. So on the agenda tonight, there is a consent item that is adjusting pay for some utility worker positions. Those positions mainly live in water distribution and water treatment, as well as wastewater collections and wastewater treatment. This change will increase expenditures or is estimated to increase expenditures next fiscal year. So with that update, you'll notice a slight change. So rather than thirty-two and fourteen and a half percent growth in these two divisions, we're looking at potentially thirty-three and about sixteen percent. So not a major change, and overall about a hundred and fifty thousand across both water and wastewater. So at the end of tonight's presentation, I will be amending staff's recommendation to essentially appropriate an additional seventy-five thousand dollars for each fund for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Moving on, most of the divisions are growing, mainly due to personnel increases and increases to overhead or cost allocation. What's keeping this fund or growth in this fund relatively flat is a reduction in the amount that we're transferring to do water CIP projects. There are, you know, so what we're seeing is a mixture of increases and decreases, and overall, we estimate growth to be about one percent in the water fund. Moving on to the wastewater fund, Fund Five Ten, again, I'll point out the two divisions that are asking for an addition tonight, that is wastewater collections and wastewater treatment. Again, growth is relatively minimal, or the change is relatively minimal. So we're going from about three percent and about thirteen percent to about three point seven percent and fourteen. Similar story here, aside from engineering, there were some reorg during the fiscal year. We removed some positions, but then added some positions. Those new positions were allocated mostly to the wastewater side versus the water side. So what we're seeing is more growth in wastewater versus the water fund when it comes to engineering. And then again, a little bit less monies are being allocated to the CIP fund for projects. That is reducing the growth rate here, despite the fact that we are increasing pay and things such as wholesale water costs, as well as budgets for equipment such as water meters or other equipment that goes to support our utilities. Next, we have Fund Five Thirty, harbor operations. In this fund, we have two divisions. Both divisions are part of community services. That includes harbor maintenance and the wharfinger operations. We do expect, or we are seeing more growth in harbor maintenance. That is because we added a position in that division during the fiscal year. Overall, we expect growth to be about twenty percent in the harbor fund. Next, we have building, Fund Five Forty. Really no changes or no significant changes in our building fund. Increases to pay, increases to overhead, but no changes in positions. Equipment operations, so this fund six-ten supports the city's fleet. Growth again is about average. Really no significant changes in this fund. The same story for our IT fund, Fund Six Thirty. No personnel changes, so growth is about average. Next, we have Fund Six Fifty. Fund Six Fifty incorporates our government and administrative activities. There is a lot of different divisions and departments in this fund. There are some changes resulting in larger than normal growth rates. The city attorney, so during the fiscal year, we added a deputy city attorney. That is leading to a higher than normal growth rate. In finance, we are reclassifying two positions to take on more responsibilities. Because of those changes, we're seeing, you know, above-average growth rates. In personnel or HR, we're adding a regular part-time position. And then in the economic development division, that's part of the city manager's department, we're adding two new positions to take on a new role for the city that has to do with communications. So overall, growth in Fund Six Fifty is about twenty-four percent. And then last but not least, we have Fund Six Sixty. This fund captures our facilities operations. A little bit, or the growth in this fund is a little above average, but nothing significant. And that concludes my report on the city's major funds. So some other budget items. At our budget study session, I was asked about some contributions to outside agencies. One thing I forgot to add on the slide is where the money is coming from. So this is coming from the city's general fund. We have about six different agencies that we support. We're not recommending any changes to how much we contribute to these agencies. We've provided monies to all six of these agencies for a long time now, going back as far as a decade. So I can pause if there's any questions, but this is, you know, something that just, we continue to fund because we see the value in the activities that these agencies provide to the community.
Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Just on this piece? One, Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, I'm just curious where we would make the, where we would account for the allocation for the participatory budgeting? If it would, because it's not considered an outside agency, but I don't think I've seen it listed up through.
That would just be come out of our departmental budgets.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Yeah, seeing it broken out like this, don't we contribute directly to the Betty Quan Chen Foundation?
Yes, we do. It's not out of the general fund. We use some monies in our housing successor fund. And they are contributions that support the activities that we're doing, so they're a little bit different. So we help these agencies out with things they believe are important to the community. And then with Betty Chen, we have an agreement that essentially helps support our uplift programs.
Closer to services for what the city is already doing, whereas this is just direct contribution, their business, their mission?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And to be exact, it's, I believe, seventy-five thousand dollars for her foundation and for her existing location on Seventh and C, and then we added another twenty thousand dollars to the family and women's center across the way, so I believe it's ninety-five a year.
Seeing no further questions, we'll send it back to Director Millar.
Thank you. And then an update about the Eureka Housing Trust Fund. So right now, it's just a waiting game. So typically, HCD, we love them, but sometimes you have to wait a little bit longer than you'd like when it comes to NOFA's. So once that NOFA is released, then we will apply and hopefully we will be successful and essentially double that investment. So we'll go from half a million dollars that we allocated earlier into the, in the year, and they will essentially match that one-for-one. So the result being that that fund will have a million dollars to invest into Eureka's housing stock.
And could you say what NOFA means?
Yes.
What's the acronym?
So it's a Notice of Funding Availability is what NOFA means.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, and quick question. I'm correct in that, you know, one of the reasons we're available to apply for this NOFA is because we have dedicated ongoing funding to the Housing Trust Fund, and that's through the, our tax on VRBOs, basically?
Correct, and I forgot to add that. So we decided to commit all monies received from essentially Airbnbs or VRBOs, what's called a vacation rental. So there's a requirement that we must dedicate a hundred thousand dollars per year. This year, we've grossed about seventy-five thousand, which is what we budgeted for, so there is still time left in the year. So I do think we will meet that target sometime this summer. But you're correct, there is an ongoing investment, as well as the seed monies that we dedicated or we took from our ARPA allocations and put towards this purpose.
And do you need any sort of direction from council in terms of if we don't make that one hundred thousand, that like, you know, we would fill that obligation from the general fund? Or is that something you would come back to us if we don't meet that?
Yeah, that's something that staff would come back to you to figure out where the money would come from.
Thank you.
So the last part is staff's recommendation. That is to conduct the public hearing, to adopt the two resolutions. And then there is a third, that's to appropriate an additional expenditure or additional expenditures to the water and wastewater funds in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So back to council for questions. Are there any further questions? This is questions on the whole thing now. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I was just pointing out that I can't see. I gotta make choices. I did have, well, you know, I have really quick, I did have one question. I was wondering if going forward, I feel like six days to kind of go over things in some ways, is there a way that going forward next year, that we can have more time between this portion of it and when we're actually voting to adopt the budget?
So, yeah, I mean, typically, we try to get the budget study sessions done in May. This year was a little bit delayed. It was, you know, the budget itself, other than the changes that Director Millard spoke to, has been available since the first introduction, which was the previous Wednesday before that, which would have been very beginning of June, if not earlier. But typically, we do, this year, we did a little bit different. We tried to do it a little different, because there was some confusion when we did it before. We did budget study sessions and then the introduction and then the adoption, and we could go back to that again as well.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, for me, I feel like when I'm going through stuff and I don't want to necessarily pepper everybody with a million questions, like all at once. So, but anyway, I am going to come back. I'm going to let everybody else ask their questions and then come back, because I do have a number of them, and I don't want to dominate or monopolize the time. So I'm going to pass it over, just so you know, at the end, I was coming back.
Okay.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. I have a few questions about the water and the wastewater, CIP, sorry, capital investment projects?
Improvement.
Improvements, thank you. So the water had shown a fifty-six percent decrease and the wastewater had shown an almost fourteen percent reduction. And I was wondering if you could go over the cause for those, or if there had been a reallocation? I guess I didn't quite catch what was going on there.
Sure. So on the water side, the last couple of fiscal years, we essentially were doing, we're spending above-average amounts on projects. If you, a good way to compare what we're spending in the CIP or to what we planned to spend is by pulling up the water and wastewater rate study. So this would have been the previous rate study. And, you know, what we anticipated was probably about two million dollars a year on average at this point. And the past couple of fiscal years, we were upwards of three to four million on the water side. So essentially, what has happened is we kind of just slowed down a bit. You know, we do expect our CIP spending to fluctuate from year to year. I mean, on the wastewater side, that reduction of about six hundred thousand dollars, that's not unusual. You just, you know, you have a number of projects. Those projects can range from anywhere from half a million to, you know, four million dollars. We only have so much staff, and depending on the size of those projects and how much staff we have, those numbers can really fluctuate.
Right, okay, so I appreciate that. So the idea is that we've made vast improvements to the tune that we can now at least reallocate that money as it's been.
Yeah, and on the water side, so we have had big projects that aren't in the CIP, and that mainly has to do with the water meter swaps. So we, you know, we've purchased thousands of water meters. That wasn't a true project in the sense that you would see that on the CIP. That's actually coming out of operational expenses. For example, at the mid-year, we increased the line item for water meters by about two million dollars. So a lot of the effort has gone into replacing those water meters recently and less effort in terms of bigger projects on the water side.
Okay.
And to try and clarify, it's, on average, it's basically the same. We do a rate review. It goes for over five years. So let's say over that rate review, I'll throw a number out there, we have a hundred million dollars to spend over five years. The first, well, the last couple of years, we've spent more than what the average should be over that five-year period, and so we're just backing off a little bit.
Yeah, but again, that's largely because we've made improvements that cost quite a bit.
And we're able to get more work done than expected in a lot of cases.
Right, I just want to be able to explain if anybody were to ask, like, why is there a reduction in the improvement fund? Well, we've made improvements now. Very costly improvements, but at least nothing's been deferred, so grateful for that. So thank you. And then you had said that we had allocated funds for an assistant city attorney, but we haven't hired someone yet, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, that's, I just wanted clarity on that. And then the last thing was, you said that there, or at least last for me, there were two economic development positions. Could you tell me a bit more about those?
Sure. I might need some help remembering, but one position is going to be a dedicated PIO or Public Information Officer position. The title right now is not that. It's essentially a program coordinator, but they will have the same responsibilities, and in the future, we might decide to change that title. And then there's a second position that I cannot remember. And in the future, we might decide to change that title. And then there's a second position that I cannot remember at the moment. But those two positions will, you know, be dedicated to improving and building out this new division to improve the city's communication. And that is communication that has to do with all departments. That's why it's in the Fund 650. It's to better, you know, help, to help departments talk about road closures or big, you know, grants or projects. So essentially, the big things that are going on at the city, these positions will be there to help get the word out.
Whether or not our water's safe, it needs to be boiled, so.
And this is a part of, you know, the repurposing of the marketing funding as a part of that. And so I would say that PIO component is kind of the regional branding that we've been, you know, doing over the past five years, but want to concentrate more on that. And I believe the other position is an admin. Oh, they're both coordinated positions. Yeah, then we, we also elevated some other positions in order to do the management of that communications division. But a lot of this money is the repurposing of some of that marketing funding for regional branding and also for, you know, marketing. We're looking at a third-party vendor to continue on with the basically cellphone data and the analysis of, of that data. And we, Director Millar and Project Manager Asbury and Director Kenyon met with a group that we're looking into so that we can obtain that information, not only for marketing and branding purposes, but also for potentially public works, community services, and planning purposes as well.
Thank you for adding on to that because I was still figuring out how to formulate that question. So you answered things that were already working in my brain.
Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez spoke, well, maybe adjacent to some of the questions I have. And that's kind of specific to the communications, but also just around tourism and the hotel tax. And, and I apologize, I could have sent you these questions earlier. You know, you may not have all the information and that's, we can check in later. But, you know, I, I think I'm, you know, I know that the hotel, the number of hotel rooms rented has decreased somewhat, but the price of those hotel rooms has increased. And so therefore, transient occupancy taxes more or less stayed the same. Do you anticipate, you know, has there been much analysis of that to kind of see where there might be opportunities to kind of restore some of that growth in number of rooms? Sorry.
You know, we do desire more rooms to increase the tax. You know, that really is reliant on having space to incorporate new developments. And we don't actively go and search or go and try and recruit new developments. So, you know, in terms of, do we expect more rooms? No, but we would certainly welcome them.
I, I will say that, you know, obviously, we have the seventy-five rooms going in on, on Broadway. I think that that will help. I have been contacted and are.
Yeah.
What's that?
You can, please share, but I think I need to clarify my question, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, there have been a lot of interest in other hotels as well.
Great. This is not so much in building additional rooms, but filling the existing rooms that, when they're vacant, that I'm wondering about. You know, basically, you know, since, since our numbers of rooms rented has gone down. But, you know, it's not that we've lost a huge, you know, substantial number of hotel rooms that we have, you know, in some ways through Home Key. But I think they're still basically the same number. You know, I'm curious in terms of whether it might make, getting to the question, under the question, whether it might make sense to, you know, invest some money in basically after an analysis of when those vacancies have increased in kind of building some interest in tourism to basically fill those rooms where, when they were once filled.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, the Lodging Alliance, you know, they talk about the shoulder season and wanting to get people into those, you know, vacant rooms and, and looking at events and other types of things to fill those. We definitely could, if council chooses to look at some other program or do some sort of analysis of when those times are and what potentially could help that out with is something that we could, we could look into. I will say that, you know, we haven't been affected by Home Key very much here, and I know that Arcata has. And that's only been maybe a season. And we may be seeing a, a, a big difference because of that, especially during the peak season when a lot of those rooms got filled up in Arcata before they did in Eureka. But that may help as well. But if council wants to look into some sort of study to determine when those times are and what potential could help fill those, we could.
Councilmember Bauer.
This is a dense document, I'll say. And I hope people that check it out, you know, there's, I mean, I have questions just because it's, there's a lot to digest. But one of those that I'm frustrated is the opioid settlement, which I think we received a, a, a cut, what, last year? And then we don't have any, I guess my question is, do, when is the expectation that we're going to get more of that settlement? Which we spent a lot of time, we, we kind of led, we were one of the leaders in that lawsuit. Does anybody know when we might receive some more of that fund?
So as you know, on the consent calendar, there is authorization for the city attorney's office to enter into additional settlements. And so we are expecting more funds to be coming our way. And I believe actually that we have funds that are available and haven't yet been spent. So both of those things are, are true, and, and we are expecting additional monies to come in, but on somewhat of a, a trickling and uncertain basis. But council is authorizing additional settlement opportunities tonight. Also, I will say that Assistant City Attorney Robert Black, who has been handling the opioid cases since the beginning for the city, could come and give a, a talk about that at, at a future date, if that's something that the council wanted.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Because the, the money could be used in a lot of great ways. And for people to understand, we were heavily impacted by the crisis, opioid crisis, you know, and much deserving of funds to work on it.
With the addition of the item to the consent calendar tonight, it has been an item of discussion in my office to find a time for Assistant City Attorney Black to come and have a larger discussion with the council about that. Something agendized that's specific to the opioid settlements and the monies that have come and the monies that will continue to come.
That'd be great. Thank you. One last question, or one of my other questions. On page twenty-nine, there was this Caltrans non-highway fund or something that we had a one-point-three million and now we're seeing a decrease to five hundred thousand. I'm just curious, you know what I'm talking about? What, what is that?
Yeah. So we have, so let me explain what a special revenue fund is. When we receive grants, a lot of times, we're actually required to separate those expenses and put those into its own fund. In this case, this special revenue fund has to do with monies that we receive from Caltrans that don't go into essentially this, this road infrastructure for cars. In this case, it's for pedestrian use. And that three million to five million is the effect of having that large multimodal grant in one fiscal year. And then that money being spent and then moving on to another grant. I believe that next grant is a bike plan or something along those lines. So special revenue funds do have a lot of volatility because sometimes there's a lot of money and some years there's zero. So that is just something to remember when you're looking at something that isn't general fund or water or wastewater. A lot of times, those funds might just be tracking one project or maybe a handful of projects. And you tend to see these big swings, and that's what you're witnessing in that fund.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank my other councilmembers and Councilmember Fernandez for going over the water and wastewater because then that saves me from doing that. And I, I did want to ask one clarifying question really quick about the two economic development positions. I can't remember. I think the line item said it was somewhere around like three hundred thousand. Is that just for salaries? That increase in budget?
Not just salaries. That's the entire division budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be.
Three hundred and five. Okay.
The majority of that increase is going to come from salaries, just because the makeup of most, all departments is mainly salaries and benefits.
Yeah.
A lot of that will be the two new positions, but we are upgrading a couple of positions in that division. So that's adding to that effect.
As, as well as some.
Grading, oh, oh, so this is, this is salaries and benefits, but it's because it's moving other positions as well.
It's everything for the whole entire division. So from a salary perspective, it's not only the two positions, but it's the also upgrading of other two positions.
Okay.
But that's not the whole sum of that three hundred thousand dollar increase. We've also increased professional services a little bit for some outside services that we may need.
Okay.
And I believe the hundred and thirty is in the zoo, not in this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So yeah.
Thanks. Okay. And then, so the main questions I have, so let's see, this is page three hundred and fifty-four. That can't be right. Okay. Maybe that is right. Either that or it's page, well, okay. So I had a question about, I noticed going through the police department's budget that there was a number of areas that saw pretty substantial decreases. But I just wanted to focus on a handful of them that were, that stood out and was wondering if you could clarify it just a little bit for me. Whomever would like to clarify this for me, just so that I have a better understanding. For example, investigation services, which had been budgeted for the twenty-three, twenty-four year at a hundred and thirty thousand, is now at forty thousand, which is a seventy percent decrease. Let's see, professional, technical, miscellaneous was a twenty-five percent decrease. Training general went from a hundred and eighty-five thousand down to eighty-five thousand, which is a fifty-five percent decrease. And so, and then the other one that I was curious about was miscellaneous tools, machines and equipment, which had been at a hundred and fifty thousand, brought down to a hundred thousand. And now in this new budget is going to be twenty-five thousand, which is seventy-five percent of previous budget. So I was wondering if you guys could speak, clarify some of that.
I think this would be good for the chief to come up and get into details though. But I will say this, that this is one of the chief's first runs through the budget process. And when we had discussions, basically said, you know, we are trying to keep the budget as flat as possible. And so I think that there was a lot of going in and looking at previous years and seeing how much money was spent there and how much was left over. And that there may have been an, an ability to take some money out of that and put it into another area that they may need. But if you could go through these again, Chief Stevens could come up and go through each one and give you an idea of why.
Hi, Chief. Thanks.
Good evening.
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to have kind of an idea, just, you know, so for example, with, you know, professional and technical, that was at a hundred and sixty was what it was budgeted. And we, and it was spent at about a hundred and twenty-five. So that one makes sense to me that they went ahead and budgeted a hundred and twenty-five. But I am wondering about investigative services that was at a hundred and thirty thousand for last year. You guys spent way under that at about seventy-four thousand, but now the budget is only seventy, excuse me, has a thirty percent reduction is only forty thousand. So that was one of them.
I will do my best because I have other people that look at what we spend those on. And I don't have what's broken down as far as what comes out of investigative services. But a lot of times, there are programs and different, what's the word I'm looking for? Technology that we purchase upfront for certain things and that we don't use them again the, the next year or we are paid upfront, so we don't need as much money in that account. So much like the city manager said, when I looked at the budget, there were areas I thought that we could decrease our budget. And the city's always been very good too. If I run into an issue where I need at mid-year to make a change because of new technology we need or new, you know, we have a major case and we have to spend monies to get certain DNA back quicker, I have the ability to massage the, the, the budget in a way that I can make that still work. So.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll say, it doesn't even necessarily, we do supplemental budget requests, so that can happen at any time during the year.
Yeah. If I can quickly explain, explain what we do internally when we're producing the budgets. What finance does is we actually take historical spending and we calculate averages per line item. What we've found is that typically, history tells a better story than what we think is going to happen. So what finance tries to do is to look at the past and say, hey, you typically spend this amount in these line items. And now you're expecting that to go down or up. But history tells us one thing. So we do encourage reallocations of line items to where we think the money's going to be spent. And per the code, I believe, monies can be transferred from, from one line item to another just based on the department's wishes and the city manager's approval. So really, the important thing is kind of the bottom line, you know, how much do you have in materials and supplies or outside services in total? Because you might have to move monies around. Things do change. Like if we take training, you might have a number or a large number of new police officers in a year. So that will, by default, will increase your training needs. The following year, that might be go down and you might be able to utilize that money in somewhere else, like supplies or capital improvements. So you will see some fluctuations between line items. That doesn't mean there's a big change happening. It just means that essentially, we've identified what is likely to happen versus what the department thinks is going to happen. So.
Okay. That actually, thank you. I appreciate that. That actually brings me to the next two. And so under training general, that one had been for the year, for year twenty-two, twenty-three was a hundred and thirty thousand. Actual expenditures was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So that was above and beyond as far as need. And then the twenty-three, twenty-four budget was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, so far, a hundred and seventy-six thousand. So again, that's coming in at pretty close or possibly even above. But what's budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five is a fifty-five percent decrease of eighty-five thousand. And I was curious, the reason I'm asking about that one and the one right underneath it, which is employee background check, that's also seen a fifty percent reduction and is now at only twenty thousand. I'm curious how those two things, training general and employee background check, how that might impact things with, are currently trying to increase our, our hiring.
So if I can, the hundred and eighty-five thousand, I believe, may have been an adjustment at mid-year just because I, it's usually around a hundred thousand what budgeted for our training. We do get reimbursements. Obviously, it's tough to live in Humboldt County and have training up here. So we send people all across the state to training. So our costs for training are astronomical. So, but we do get reimbursed by the State of California and the Peace Officers Standards and Trainings Commission. So a lot of the classes that we send officers and staff to are reimbursable classes. So they go to the class, they submit the paperwork, we get a check back. That check goes into a, I won't say a revenue account, but it goes into another account within our budget. Then that allows us to utilize, but we can't use that money directly. But if we go over our budget, we know that money is sitting there going back into the general fund to cover that. So there's, finance has given us the leeway to go over our budget and training because of the reimbursements we get. We just can't put them right back into the same account and spend them immediately.
Okay. Can you, I, so I guess I'm wondering if, if previous years, you know, it was, you know, budgeted at, you know, a hundred and thirty-five thousand or, you know, twenty or forty thousand, is, so budgeting at such a noticeably lower amount with just the intent that that gets adjusted later? Or I, I guess I'm just wondering why I budget it for that when it's consistently been above that?
I just, because the, both finance and the department felt that those are higher levels would kind of come back down closer to the historical average. And also with the idea that if more money was needed, that we would check back in during the mid-year to make adjustments at that point.
Okay. I think.
I can assure you, nobody's going to go without training.
Well, people are going without training because they aren't, we aren't adequately staffed for them to be able to take the time to do it. So we do have some issues that we're trying to address.
It won't be due to lack of funding, though.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further comment? I mean, questions? Seeing none, we'll open up this public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one, we will close this public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion and comments. Councilmember Castellano, thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, first, uh, I'm, thank you again. And I just have a quick comment. It's, it's kind of the tourism, uh, partially just because I've been kind of thinking about tourism and other facets of my work. And I'm, I'm excited about the shift in the communications and some of the ideas that are, you know, kind of floating around regarding that. And as I'm sitting here thinking about it, and we haven't done this in a while, but I'm somewhat interested in a kind of council ad hoc, uh, like two people to kind of drill down a little bit more on the tourism as we make this shift. I think it could be kind of a fun way of, uh, working, working with staff to, um, get a little bit more into the weeds there. And I'm just curious, um, if that might be amenable? If, yeah.
If.
So I was just gonna say, as a point of order, would that come up during, uh, your?
It's specific to the budget, I guess, you know, and kind of thinking forward in terms of the TOT and things like that. So that's why I bring it up in this.
Sure.
Moment.
Yeah.
City manager's lottery?
I will defer to City Attorney Luna, but if it needs to be agendized, I mean, from a staff's perspective, if council chooses to do that, that's something that we can do.
Yeah, it wouldn't be something that we're voting on tonight during this item, but uh, certainly something we'll take into consideration for future agendas.
Great. Okay.
Any further comments or about a motion? Councilmember Castellano.
Again, thank you.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. The resolution of the City of Eureka adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and the resolution of the Eureka Public Financing Authority adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
And to appropriate an additional expenditure to the water and wastewater funds to the amount of seventy thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars respectively.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Anything further? Seeing none, we're gonna vote. Just a little bit. Thanks for that. So shall we just take an oral vote?
We can call the vote.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we will move on to our second public hearing, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule. Director Millar?
Is your mic on?
Sorry. Um, so typically with the budget, uh, we update the city's fee schedule. Um, the point of having fees is to recover costs. It's not to make a profit. Uh, there are lots of different fees, uh, across all departments. Um, the document is the best way to highlight those fees. So tonight, we are here to essentially adopt those changes. And, uh, the recommendation is up on the screen.
Questions for Director Millar? Seeing none, we'll open this public hearing. Is anybody in the audience here to comment on this item? Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
At which point we will close this public hearing and ask for a motion and comments. If there are any. Councilmember Moulton?
Um, thank you for this report. This one is fast, but this one's quite thorough. Uh, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate the, um, move towards efficiency and like elegance and just like if things don't need to be so lined out, we can, um, conglomerate them. It just looks like we're making things more efficient. Um, sure, I'll make a motion to, we're, we're there, yeah? Good to question now? Okay. To adopt a resolution of the City Council establishing various fees and service charges within the City of Eureka.
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote. Oh, look at that.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution twenty eleven dash two-two, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, and there will be no separate discussion of these items. And I'm not aware of any items being pulled?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Great.
Second.
So moved and seconded, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Legislative action correspondence, do we have any? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah. Excuse me. Um, we had something kind of come up suddenly. Um, and, um, Assemblyman, this is a letter to Assemblyman Wood to support, um, a climate resiliency bond, um, scheduled for November twenty twenty-four election. Um, it would allocate five point two billion dollars for safe drinking water and water resilience programs. So there's some potential benefit to the city, um, team funds for, you know, drinking water things. And, um, it has a lot of really good, um, potential funding for all kinds of programs for community health and, and water and clean water and, 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 you know, um, yeah, water. It's great for water. So, yeah, I think we all have it before us, right, to look at?
We do. Water is life. Do we have any, um, questions for Councilmember Bauer? Okay. As a point of order, do I open this to the public? No. So we just need a consensus?
I assume that you want this to be processed and dealt and not brought back, correct? Is that?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we're, what, June?
Yeah, we have a deadline.
June seventeenth and the budgets are, yeah.
And this is what was discussed by our, uh, two-by-two HCSD meeting, correct?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Great. So we have consensus? Great. Is there any further legislative action? Okay, ordinances and resolutions. So the November fifth, twenty twenty-four, general municipal election with Assistant City Manager Powell.
Yes, mayor and council before you tonight are five, uh, resolutions. Most of these are routine, uh, to call the election for our two council positions for Ward Two and Ward Four. And also to put onto the ballot the, uh, question that was brought forward by the initiative that was, um, put forward by the public and, um, was ratified at your October meeting. Sorry, I don't have that date in front of me. And additionally, there's a resolution setting the deadlines for arguments for when they will be due and rebuttal arguments that will go out to the public, uh, on Thursday, uh, so that the, anyone who would like to submit an argument either in favor or against the initiative, they'll have the requirements and the timeline. We're also setting a resolution for candidate statements. We haven't done so since the early two thousands. And, uh, we are bringing our, um, resolution in compliance to what the County of Humboldt does for their candidate statements, since, uh, we actually pay them to process or to publish those into the voter information guide. Uh, when we published the agenda, we had, um, compiled a question for the initiative. At that time, we received, uh, some public input. And, uh, so I'm going to turn it over now to City Attorney Luna, who will explain to you some differences in the question. All of the ordinances with their changes are available to the public, and you have them in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, as Assistant City Attorney Powell mentioned, we did get.
Manager.
I'm sorry, City Manager Powell.
He's really begging for that deputy now.
Yeah, that's been floated for a while. If anybody knows anyone who wants to apply for that. Uh, we did receive a letter from the attorney who represents the proponents of the initiative and who also drafted the initiative language, Mr. Brad Johnson. Um, we received that after the question, the ballot question was published, and, uh, we certainly appreciate that input. And in the spirit of, uh, compromise, we did draft an, a new question, uh, taking into account that input that we got. Uh, I believe, I saw it yesterday morning, although I think it may have come in over the weekend. So, uh, the question that you have in front of you has been revised from the one that was published on Wednesday of last week, uh, with that input in mind. And I can answer any further questions you have about that.
Great. Councilmember Fernandez?
Just a brief note, because we have three copies. They all seem to have same language, except one asked that the judge. One of the copies that we have asked that the election be held on November eighth. So if we could fix that, so nobody shows up to the polls late. Okay.
Yeah, there's fi, I think there's, I think there's, I think there's five resolutions here. So, yeah.
And so that was part of it, trying to figure out which one of these is the correct one, or are we approving one of these?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The one that I'm discussing just has the question at the bottom at section two.
Okay.
So, and, and only one of your resolutions should be discussing what the question is and approving that question.
Thank you.
Right, I made copy, or I corrected the question, um, for the arguments, the impartial analysis, to make sure that they were all the same. Uh, so.
Okay, yes. Only one of them is directing you to make a decision about the question, but the question appears on multiple of these.
Right.
Does that make sense? Okay. And so your comment is just that the date is wrong on one of them?
Correct.
Okay, we'll certainly correct that before this gets signed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Found it.
Do we have any further questions for City Attorney Luna? Okay. Seeing no one, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here in chambers that wishes to comment on this item? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Juan Pablo Cervantes, and I'm commenting as a resident of Eureka. Could we put the language on the TV or make it visible? Yeah, the revised language.
I don't have a slide for that, but I can read it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Shall the measure, shall the measure amending Eureka's general plan creating an overlay designation for downtown city lots that limit those lots with exceptions to parking and high-density housing and creating an overlay for the former Jacobs Middle School site, allowing housing, public, quasi-public, and commercial uses with at least forty percent of non-public-use area dedicated to high-density housing, subject to review for consistency with state law by the California Department of Housing and Community Development be adopted?
I do not see anybody on Zoom.
Thanks, Nora. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. Pardon me. Um, so, reading it and hearing it, it's a little different. Um, the overlay designation for downtown city lots, it limits those lots with exceptions to parking and high-density housing. Um, but it doesn't, does it? It just says if you're building housing, then you have to have parking, but it doesn't say you have to build housing there?
It doesn't say that you have to build housing. It says that the, the things that can be there are housing and parking, including bike parking. It doesn't require that housing be built.
I understand. Oh, I see. But if somebody, say, came and bought the lot from the city, and this restriction was in place, and they wanted to build an amusement park, a very small amusement park?
That would not be allowed under the new guidelines.
That is a nuance I had not grasped. Thank you.
So yes, we are interested in comments and a motion? So there's a question, uh, point of order. Do all five need to be read or which one? Or could you put the motion up on the staff recommendation? Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, I just want to say for, for the record, so it's said, I do find this language, I mean, I'm very familiar with this ballot initiative, and, and I just find it a little confusing. Um, and/or, you know, for instance, that, um, it doesn't, it, it, oh, and/or slightly misconstrues maybe the nature of the ballot initiative in terms of the limiting the lots with exceptions to parking and high-density housing. I mean, it, it mandates parking if high-density housing is built, which is different than limiting it with exceptions to parking and high-density housing. I just feel like that's actually an important distinction. And I don't know, it's a li, a little challenging to have this kind of put in, you, I mean, you know, I, I'm not blaming y'all at all. And so I don't know in terms of like point of order, like kind of where to go with that.
It's incredibly challenging. I can tell you that I've worked with staff on a question for, uh, for quite some time, and we've done lots of workshopping internally. And we've also taken comment externally, uh, from proponents, uh, attorney. And so with only seventy-five words, um, it is, and, and such a long initiative, it is very complicated to incorporate all of the different pieces. And so, um, you know, that can never be done in, in seventy-five words, I don't think. Uh, so we just encourage people to go and read the initiative itself, uh, and to ask questions of your representatives if you have questions about the initiative itself. Uh, the, the question is intended to capture, uh, you know, the, the bulk of the initiative, the spirit of the initiative, and, um, you know, be neutral, be informative and be neutral. And that's what we've tried to do here. Understanding, of course, that , uh, if you were to ask ten different people about what the question should be, you would get a thousand different answers.
So if I could just, it, that was very clear to me, that if with high-density building, you need to have the parking to go with it. That's very clear. Is there a way to whittle that in here or cobble it in?
This question is at seventy-five words. If you'd like to cobble it in, you'd have to take something else out. And it's not exactly that. The parking stays regardless of whether or not there's high-density housing.
And it's not exactly that, the parking stays regardless of whether or not there's high-density housing. Right, so what we're saying here is that the things that are allowed are parking and high-density housing, not that they have to go together necessarily. The parking gets maintained at its current levels regardless of whether or not something goes on top of it.
Councilmember Castellano, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I feel like it's neutral to the point of misinforming the public about the ballot initiative is my concern, you know, just in terms of, like, it doesn't talk about the requirement for parking if high-density housing is built, which I feel like is sort of the point of that ballot initiative.
Well, I, I mean, is that a question?
Sure, I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
Okay, yeah. I certainly hear you, but I think that it really would matter whether you were asking a proponent of the initiative or an opponent of the initiative, what the point of the initiative is. And so therein lies the complexity for us as a city to put a ballot question in front of the voters that doesn't insert our feeling about it. And again, I really have tried to do that here, and not just me, but other staff members who know the initiative very well. Director Kenyon is here to also, you know, perhaps answer questions about the nuances and why this is, you know, we've tried to do the best we can with seventy-five words, so. And keeping in mind that neutrality is really important here. Could this be contained in the rebuttals?
Well, yeah, obviously, there are arguments for and against that will be coming as well.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Castellano?
I guess, like, am I wrong that how the parking would not be required? I mean, sorry, am I wrong that parking is required with the ballot initiative?
Parking is required.
Building a parking garage?
If you're going to build housing, which would be the only thing that you could build on these parking lots, if you're going to build that, the remaining, the existing parking must remain, and you must comply with whatever requirements there are for that housing development as well on top of it. But without adding that, if you looked at the memo that City Attorney Luna wrote initially related to this, it is four hundred and something words, I don't know how many, but it covers every aspect of it, and if you're trying to cover every aspect of it, I don't know, without removing an important part describing what you're trying to say.
Director Kenyon has the language if
Yeah, I'll read it right now, so we know what we're talking about. It says, "The following uses are permitted under the parking lot overlay. Public parking for passenger and light commercial vehicles, number one. Number two, high-density residential above-ground-floor public parking or garage public parking where two conditions are met. The number of public parking spaces is at least equal to the number of spaces currently available at the parking lot proposed for residential development. And if any parking spaces are required for the occupants of the residential development, such parking spaces must be in addition to the public parking spaces." And then the third thing you can have on these lots is bike parking. So you can only have high-density housing plus parking, or parking by itself.
And I think it would take seventy-five words just to describe that.
Councilmember Bauer?
No, and I gotta say this, you've done an excellent job, because you've maintained neutrality this is, as democracy requires, you know, and so some of us may find it hard in that current language, but I think it does what it's supposed to do, you know, so really, kudos. I mean, we see propositions all the time, you know, that come and they get sued because the Attorney General or Secretary of State gives a specific language that, you know, maybe seems biased, and this is the least biased way to put what is being proposed on the ballot. So I think it's well-done, whether, you know, we feel a certain way or not about it, it is what it is. And it's going to require people to rebut what they think the truth is, you know. So yeah, I've read it twenty times, and I'm just like, it's perfectly balanced for what you're supposed to do, you know, and so it's a good job.
So then you did, do you want to make a motion so that we can continue this conversation?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Great, and is there a second? I see you. A second so that we can further discuss this? Not to pass or vote for further discussion? We have a motion on the table, we can have a second, then we'll have further commentation and further discussion.
I'll second so we can have the conversation.
Thank you, okay. Councilmember Fernandez?
I love writing things, I hate writing these, I hate trying to interpret them, and I understand where you're coming from. Councilmember Bauer, let alone everyone here that's trying to figure out how to do this in the most neutral way possible. I've seen what was originally written, I've seen what was offered from the proponents, and what I had put together literally from the two comes out to sixty-six words. And so I don't know if it's going to meet the muster of those here at the dais, but I would at least like to read it. So just bear with me, because, yes, what we have here is confusing, what we had previously was confusing, and the only way you're going to get the entire story is by reading what's going to go out. But what I had put together is, "Shall the voters approve an initiative that would amend the City of Eureka's adopted general plan, creating overlay designations for twenty-one city-owned parcels and the former Jacobs Middle School site? This limits those lots to public parking, housing, where the number of public parking spaces is preserved, and bike parking, and creates a designation for the former Jacobs Middle School site allowing housing, public, and other commercial uses."
Thank you, and Councilmember Maltin had your hand up at one point?
Yeah, I do think that the fact that the current level of parking being required to be maintained is the, like, the crux of the effect of this on the downtown sites. I think that to just say parking and high-density housing, when you read it, it sounds like parking and high-density housing. Like, there's going to be housing, there'll be parking next to it, it doesn't say the thing about that makes this kind of a big deal to development. I do have a suggestion, I appreciate the wordsmithing, and that this is really, having done a lot of grant writing, where they're like three thousand characters, not a period more, I totally get that. I do have a suggestion for how to fit it in, but it would require, ironically enough, for Department of Housing and Community Development to be an acronym. Can we do that? And not use all those words?
I certainly don't recommend it.
Okay.
And I have, I'm shocked that you would recommend an acronym.
I know, but I really want the word required in there, or maintain the same level of parking, where it says high-density housing and parking equivalent to what's on the lots already, but say that with less words, parking equivalent. I mean, just that, that point, I think, is, one, why people like it, and two, why people don't like it. People want that same number of parking spaces to be downtown, no matter what gets built there, or people don't want development that's required to have expensive parking garages underneath it. I think that's the crux when it comes to the downtown lots.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the truth about the initiative is that there are many, many important nuances that I think we need to encourage people to understand and be educated about, not just this one. So I respect that this one is of particular importance to the members of the council. But I don't think that it should be, my opinion is that it should not be swapped out in favor of an acronym for the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Not at this stage, not at this not on the fly. I think that if this particular issue is a sticking point, I would be more in favor of waiting and having, having further input from council and the public on this matter. Although I will say that, and the county clerk, recorder, and registrar of voters, Mr. Cervantes is here, and he can speak to this as well. You know, there's another pressure here, which is to get a letter assigned to this, to this measure, so that campaigning can take place and education can take place on both sides.
Mayor and council, I did check with our county clerk, and we do have time. If the council wishes to delay this until the second meeting in July, as our first meeting is canceled, it would be July sixteenth. But the downside would be that we would delay the letter that would be assigned to this measure. And so those who are interested in educating the public on this matter, the letter would not be assigned until after July sixteenth.
Councilmember Castellano?
Or possibly have a special meeting in order to that could also be an option.
That's an option, if everyone's calendar will allow.
I know it's tricky during the summary. I'm going to throw in my my version, which is, I very quickly crafted, it really would just take out entirely by the California Department of Housing and Community Development and leave the line with state law, because I think that that's the most essential part, and kind of, and say, limits these lots with exceptions to parking and high-density housing, requiring parking when housing is built, and creating an overlay for the former Jacobs Middle School site. Otherwise, it would be the same, it's just a idea.
Did you count the words?
Pardon?
Did you? Did you do a word count?
Well, I mean, I took out one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine words, and I put in one, two, three, four, five, six words, so it's three words shorter.
Thank you, I just want to make sure before we have additional discussion of that. Do you want to read it again? The first, the first part?
Sure. "Shall the measure amending Eureka's general plan, creating an overlay designation for downtown city lots that limits those lots with exceptions to parking and high-density housing, comma, requiring parking when housing is built, comma, and creating an overlay for the former Jacobs Middle School site, allowing housing, public, quasi-public, and commercial uses with at least forty percent of non-public use area dedicated to high-density housing, subject to review for consistency with state law, be adopted."
You got rid of with exceptions, is that true? At the top?
I kept everything, I didn't, I only got rid of by the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay, and I do see our registrar standing, so if you'd like to come up and please give us some input, we'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, thank you for the time. Couple of just things that I've heard so far. Abbreviations get counted individually, something like ETA would be three words. And then I don't
Such good information, thank you.
I'm going to be very cautious about how I phrase this next part, but if I was having this conversation with Pam, prior to this meeting, I would, I would caution developing the ballot label without your city attorney kind of leading that front. There's a lot of litigation associated here, and so I, I would just be very careful to whip something up on the fly. Yeah, thank you.
So we will be taking three more comments, and then we will be calling the question. First, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, who hasn't spoken, and then back to you two.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you for trying to incorporate the language and neutralize this. When I saw the letter last night, and I read the letter, and when I had read the previous iteration of it, I was like, this could be more neutral. But I felt that what came to us from the other, from the attorney was very confusing. I thought the language wasn't clear, and I feel like it's incumbent on us to try to provide clear language that's also as detailed as possible and neutral. So I appreciate this kind of crafty and odd line you're trying to straddle, and I, we, I talked with Councilmember Fernandez last night, and we were trying to kind of sort this, because we were like, this is odd, like, what do we do? So I appreciate that this is like a better one. It seems like, based off of what our registrar just explained to us, that it's not a great idea for us to be trying to wordsmith this on the fly right now, but we are, all of us, uncomfortable with the language as it appears. And so I think then we need to do, figure out how we're going to address that, not trying to just figure it out ourselves right now and pass something, but to do it the way that we've been advised, I think, by our city attorney as well as our registrar. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Fernandez? Our Councilmember Fernandez, excuse me.
So, it seems like we have at least a few alternatives that we could offer to the, to the city attorney, and I'm not sure how our precedence of motions take place, but I would offer that we provide her with what we've developed here or previously, and postpone this until we can have our July sixteenth meeting.
There's only one motion and second on the table, just FYI.
Okay.
Councilmember Maltin, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you, just to clarify my position. This one doesn't, doesn't address my concern. And I appreciate the pressing nature of this, the need for neutrality. I appreciate that there, as City Attorney Luna says, that there is a lot of complexity, and just kind of picking out one point to be really clear about, instead of everything being kind of clear about. In other words, I'd rather not have the perfect be the enemy of the good, I would go ahead and move forward with this. But I'm also happy to pause and re-wordsmith if that's what everybody else wants to do.
Okay, so I did say three comments, we're going to call the question. So we're going to call the question?
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay, well, shall we read the first motion and then do the substitute? Or would you rather do the substitute first?
You have to do a substitute first.
And staff's recommendation was already motioned.
I understand, but it's been a long time since that happened, and so I was curious if we needed to read that motion again. Councilmember Castellano, your substitute, please?
I would, I would like to move every item except for this item, which I would like to move to a special meeting.
Okay, so, the motion on the table currently with a second, is to, again, one more time?
To move, to move every item in this motion except for, sorry, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka, California, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt to provide, sorry.
If you want to, I would just keep all of the resolutions together, they're kind of a package deal.
Okay, okay, then I would like to move to take this item up at a special meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We all are aware of the motion? Please vote.
Just to be clear, which motion? You're voting on the second motion first, is that correct?
Apologize, yes, you are voting on Leslie's motion.
The one that she just did, not the one I seconded earlier.
All right, are you
Because I had seconded that, so wouldn't we need to say no on that first, and then
Are you open to that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely, yeah, I just wasn't sure what we have to do and what order we have to do it in.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Contreras Deloche, I think that we can treat the second motion as withdrawn and replaced, based on the city clerk's recommendation, that all the resolutions be together, so let's call that the second motion, and it was, it was motioned and seconded by you to have all of the resolutions heard at a special meeting to be set in the future.
Yeah.
And can we have some idea on this special meeting? We have a lot of people traveling, and I just want to make sure that that motion can be fulfilled and not taken up at the July sixteenth meeting.
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm imagining June twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
So I could do the twenty-fourth, I could not do the twenty-fifth?
So I could do the 24th? I could not do the 25th? I can't do it. 24th?
I'll, I'll note really quick that I have to be out of the area for knee surgery on the 26th. I can't do the 25th.
The 24th?
The 24th, I can.
Let's make sure that the motion to essentially postpone this to some future date actually passes before we get in the weeds about another date, please.
Thank you for clarifying that. Please vote.
Can we clarify that the second was councilmember Contreras Deloche? Okay, I just wanted to, thank you.
'Twas I. Councilmember Bauer voted no. Four yes votes, motion carries.
So it sounded like we had at least three June 24ths?
I'm not here.
So we've got one, two, three, four. June 24th, which is a Monday. Councilmember Bauer can't be here. So that gives us one, two, three, four, five. That is a quorum. So how do we proceed with that, Pam?
I, June 24th at five o'clock?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thumbs up?
And I, I I, I will endeavor to, to find a way to come up with some additional language based on today's conversation, but keeping in mind that I don't get to talk to a quorum of you outside of this, this room. So we will see each other again in, in just under a week to have this conversation again. So, you know, come, come prepared, but I also want to remind you to not necessarily ask me to vet language on the fly and give you an, an opinion about whether or not it would be legally sufficient. Just be, be cognizant of that. I, I will, you know, we can workshop this, but it is a delicate proposition. So you'll probably be, be hearing from me about how to do that without violating the Brown Act. Thank you.
Much appreciation. And after all of that, we are going to take a 10-minute, no, we're not. We're gonna take a seven-minute break, and we'll see you here in seven minutes. We will reconvene this city council meeting on June 18th for the city of Eureka. Our next item on the agenda will be ranked choice voting, and we'll turn that over to city attorney Luna.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the city has an existing ordinance implementing ranked choice voting, and this coming general election will be the first time that we actually use ranked choice voting for our elections, our two wards that are up this year. And we've been in discussion with our county clerk recorder and registrar of voters, Mr. Cervantes, who is here, and others about implementation, and in an effort to try to roll out the most, the smoothest implementation. There's been a few suggestions made about how to update our ordinance ahead of that process. And so what you have before you is the introduction of those changes. I will note that in blue, you'll see the additions to the ordinance that were published on Wednesday last week with the agenda. We did receive some feedback from a couple of folks, or one gentleman in particular, Mr. Hill, who has been very helpful in providing feedback. Him and another gentleman named Mr. Chesen, who I believe is on the, I believe he's on Zoom. I see his hand there. So both of these gentlemen have been very helpful in, in coordination with, with Mr. Cervantes about updating this ordinance. So you'll see in blue what was published last Wednesday. There's also yellow highlights for some changes that were made today in response to input that we got yesterday. So do you guys see that there in front of you? Okay. And for the public, there are copies of this available. Because this was last minute, they didn't become available to the public until, until right before the meeting. So there are copies for folks that are here, and they certainly will be made available to folks in other ways, so they can see them online. And then, of course, this is the introduction. It will be a second reading at the next meeting. So there will be opportunities for folks to get familiar with this new language.
Great. Thanks.
So our registrar?
Yeah, I think-
Is he gonna come up and answer questions?
I think he's available to answer questions. I don't know that he had anything prepared necessarily, but he's here, he's here if we have questions for him.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any questions? From council? Well, seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here in chambers that would like to speak on this item? Hello and welcome again. Mr. Cervantes.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just really wanted to compliment your staff in, in working through this and really becoming experts in ranked choice voting along the way. It's been great working with them, and I think you're in good hands going forward through this process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody on Zoom? I see some hands. We've got a Steve and a Steven. How about we start with Steve? Chesen?
Chesen?
Chesen? I'm sorry, I can't see that far.
Thank you. Mayor Burgel, councilmembers Castellano, Moulton, Fernandez, Bauer, and Contreras Deloche. My name is Steve Chesen. I'm president of Californians for Electoral Reform. We work on education and advocacy around ranked choice voting and other electoral reforms. We've been doing this for over 30 years. My colleague Stephen Hill and I co-authored a memo to you about Eureka's implementation of ranked choice voting. We unfortunately found that your ordinance, even with the proposed amendments, has a number of problems, very correctable problems. But one of the problems is so severe that you could not implement ranked choice voting even after the city council adopts the amendments. I will try to summarize some of the problems, and I think I can do that in less than three minutes. The first problem is with a type of ballot known as an exhausted ballot. An exhausted ballot occurs when a voter's ballot no longer has any continuing candidates, as defined in your ordinance, marked on their ballot. At that point, the ballot becomes exhausted and can no longer count towards the final tally of the election. Your ordinance, even with the proposed amendments, has no definition or mention of the term exhausted ballot and what the vote counting process should do with an exhausted ballot. Without that, you cannot run a legal ranked choice voting election in California. Moreover, your voting equipment vendor, Artiner Civic, has not certified its equipment to run without tallying exhausted ballots. If you tried to run a ranked choice voting election in this fashion, you would likely not have any voting equipment to use for counting the election. A second problem is that your proposed language also has no definition and no mention of undervotes. That is also necessary and easy to include. A third problem is your ordinance gives little guidance for the number of rankings that voters will be allowed to use. It only says that there should be a minimum of three rankings. Out of the dozens of cities and states using ranked choice voting, most of them allow a minimum of five or six rankings. San Francisco allows up to 10 rankings. I realize you may not always have five or six candidates in every race, but when you do, voters generally enjoy being able to rank as many candidates as they like. This kind of detail should be better defined in your ordinance and not left up to the discretion of election administrators from election to election. I hope this, I hope this helps. Your staff has contact information for both Stephen Hill and myself, and we are ready and willing to assist Eureka in implementing ranked choice voting and in helping you fix your ordinance. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And next up is Steven. Mr. Hill?
Mayor, your microphone is off, I believe.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Steve. And next up is Mr. Hill. Steven?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Burgel and council members. My name is Stephen Hill. I'm an elections consulting assistant at Fair Vote, and I helped a number of cities implement ranked choice voting. I co-authored the memo sent to all of you, and I second what Steve Chesen just said about the real shortcomings of your proposed language, especially around exhausted ballots. In addition, ranked choice voting is being used by dozens of cities and states, and these jurisdictions have adopted some best practices that you might want to consider for your own RCV elections. First, running the final RCV tally down to the final two candidates. This allows both candidates and the public to understand the full victory mandate of the winner. If you stop the RCV tally when any candidate hits, first hits a majority, while a number of candidates have not yet been eliminated, it will result in a candidate who appears to have barely won the election, with, for example, 50.1% of the vote. But if the tally had been run to the final two candidates, that winning candidate will have garnered a much greater victory margin. It could be 60% or more, a landslide, providing an accurate picture of the real victory margin. That can also be important in the process of governing. Otherwise, you have people saying, oh, you barely won, when in fact, the candidate actually won by a wide margin. In the past, some winning candidates have gotten very upset that their true mandate was not reported in an RCV memo, in an RCV race. In my memo, I proposed language that you could incorporate into your implementation ordinance for that feature. Second, running the first RCV tally on election night or shortly thereafter. When RCV was first used, some registrars would wait three days before running the first tally. This was revealed to be a mistake because it gave the public a false snapshot of how close the election really was. Only by running that RCV tally, what we call early and often, can the candidates and the general public and the media have a real snapshot at the closeness of the election. San Francisco and Alameda County run the first RCV tally on election night and announce the results as preliminary. As more ballots are processed, especially the large number of vote-by-mail ballots, those are added to the data set and counted in each subsequent tally. Tallying ballots initially on election night has never resulted in a surprise outcome. Quite the contrary, the surprise comes when the tally is not run earlier and often. So all of the rich information contained in the second, third, and lower rankings isn't added into the vote totals, and that can lead to misperceptions. In fact, in Oakland in 2010 mayor election, the, the frontrunner was up by nine points initially. Everybody for three days was saying this is who's obviously going to win. And when they ran the tally for the first time on Friday, the, the person who was in second initially launched into the lead, and it discredited that candidate as, as a winner. So there are, there's some other things-
Thank you, Steve. I'm sorry, or Steven. I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up. Appreciate you being here, though. Do you see anybody else for public comment?
I see no one else.
Seeing no one else, we will close public comment and bring it back to council.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to address a couple of points that were brought up by Mr. Chesen and Mr. Hill. There is additional language that was put into this, as I said, additional language that was put in this afternoon in response to the memo that Stephen Hill sent. And so, for example, exhausted ballot is now defined, undervoting is now defined. And we did take their advice on changing the language around overvoting to comply with the HART certification. So those three things that I considered to be, you know, very well-taken have been added at the last minute. The Steves have not been able to review those, I don't believe, because of the late hour. So as, as introduced tonight, those three items will have been addressed. And additional items, I think, are not mandatory. They are optional. And when we have additional time to consider those, we certainly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Moulton?
Mr. Cervantes, could you speak to running the, the different strategies for running tallies and the expense in time as-
Yeah, through, through the mayor or through the chair. I don't know what the proper parliamentary procedure is at, at city council. So there's a, there's like a nomenclature thing that I want to just make sure we, we separate the, the words that we're using. There's tallying results, and that part, our tabulator, which is the, the piece of equipment that does the math. And, you know, you input all of the ballots, and it tells you who won by how much, and gives results. That tabulator will do the full amount of tallying, so it'll go through every round necessary in order to determine a winner. That'll happen every time we, we tally the votes. I think how often we post results is what they're speaking to. And so my understanding is that they would like for us to do that full ranked choice voting tabulation every time that I post unofficial results. The system as it is will initially just do the first round, and then it won't go beyond that. What we, or I guess what, what my understanding of this ordinance is, is that it gives me the discretion of whether or not to do that every time. I've got, I guess, mixed feelings about that in terms of where people will be confused, whether we do the full tally with every round every single time, or whether we just do the first round until the very end when we do, when I certify the election. The example given where results change, that can happen throughout, that does happen throughout. Anybody that pays attention to elections will know that that'll occur with first-to-post voting. And so it would be just imperative for us to work with the media and convey that idea that the ranked choice tabulation isn't gonna fully occur until the end. I think the ordinance as it stands gives me the discretion to figure out how to go about that in such a way that we don't confuse the public, which is a, a pretty big priority for me. When, so that's part of that. The other part that I think you're referring to is whether we go beyond 50% plus one. The Secretary of State-certified system allows the tabulator to stop once we get 50, once a candidate gets 50% plus one. The impact on that in terms of costs is that one of the things that increases in cost is manual tally. That's that 1% audit that we do after the election. If we're gonna count additional rounds beyond that 50%, that's gonna take additional administrative time, and that's where you're gonna see the longer, the, the larger cost.
Not that you have numbers on this, but are we talking about a few days, a few weeks? Are we talking about multiple staff people? I'm just curious how big of a cost, because I think, you know, winning an election is winning an election, but I'm an amateur politician. So I think that you're, I don't know, it sounds like ego to me. I won by this many points. Like, no, you're representing who you're representing, whether it's by one vote or a thousand. But what kind of expense are we talking about?
You know, it's, it's gonna take the same amount of days because at this junction in time, we use every day possible in order to certify an election. I, I have 30 days after the election to certify it. And so it would just be a matter of bringing on more staff in order to make sure we're able to accomplish it in time. I've never done a ranked choice voting manual tally. And so we're separating out the city of Eureka in order for us to gauge that and add staffing along the way to make sure we get it done in time. So I, I can't tell you how much more it's gonna be.
Sure. You're not gonna give me a dollar figure?
For example, though, every round, we have to re-tabulate, basically. So we redo every round as if it was another election manually.
Okay. And then just to, city attorney Luna, we can come back to this, right? We pass an ordinance, lots of laws get passed, we come back and adjust them as needed at later dates regularly. Yes?
Oh, absolutely. And I think that that's such a good point here. We are, as Mr. Cervantes said, this is our, our first time with this. So, you know, we want to put in an ordinance that guides us all enough through the process, but we certainly are going to learn a lot in this first round. And changes to the ordinance are, are fairly, fairly simple to do, to accomplish once we know more and once we have some idea of how we want those changes to look.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cervantes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. I guess my question, just to clarify, let's say there's six candidates. Soon as we hit 50% plus one, we stop. It's over. I think what, kind of what I heard from the Steves is like going through to the end, because it may change. But what does the law say essentially, you know, California law? Can you do that? Can you go to the end if somebody hits 50% plus one? Or does it, I mean, we're done? I guess, do you understand my question there?
Yeah, there's, so, and I, I apologize for using the Steves. I don't recall their last names at this point. Chesson, Mr. Chesson and Hill spoke to is a memo from a former Secretary of State, Deborah Bowen. The legislature really hasn't done much in the way of addressing ranked choice voting. The past few things that have come before the legislature, they've decided to vote against ranked choice voting. And so there aren't any laws per se. There are systems that are certified. And then we have a memo from Secretary Bowen asking us to perform it in a best practice sort of way. There's some nuance there for Humboldt County that isn't, that isn't there for many other jurisdictions. We have this organization called the Humboldt Transparency Project, where every ballot gets scanned by an independent organization with a chain of custody through our office. And so if a candidate really wanted to know how much they won by, they can, they can do the full thing on their own and figure that out. In the courts, tabulation data, which is called cast vote records, are becoming more and more seen as a public document. Those cast vote records are files that describe how each ballot kind of voted. And so the system that we use for tabulation is an open-source system. So if somebody really wanted to know what the outcomes were after certification and know, you know, down to the, down to the vote, how they would have done, it's possible for them to do that on their own as well. Yeah, the nice thing about transparency is that eventually it takes, it takes workload off of your administrative staff because it's just there for anybody to do what they will with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions for Mr. Cervantes before he has a seat? We really appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Okay, so we've had our questions. We've had our public comment. We've had our comments. We need a motion, and a second, and a vote. Councilmember Bauer. Nope, I already called him. Councilmember Bauer.
I'll make the motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 1036-CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka amending sections 37.20, 37.21, and 37.23 of chapter 37 of the Eureka Municipal Code, ranked choice voting for the offices of mayor and city council.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Without further comment, please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deluch, did your vote go away?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. And again, we really appreciate you being here. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to report and action items. Design review with Development Services Director Kenyon.
Good evening. Let me pull up my slide show. Oh, does Derek need me to share my screen, or he'll do it? Okay. So I'm presenting tonight because at city council's last regular meeting on June 4th, council requested a future agenda item to discuss the design review committee and design review process. And council has previously received presentations on this topic, most recently in March and October of 2023. Cool. Thanks, Derek. I want to begin, sorry, by just explaining that the city has two zoning codes. We have our coastal zoning code and our inland zoning code. And tonight, I'm focused on our inland zoning code because our goal is to confronciously update our coastal code to be the same as our inland code. And in our inland code, we have two types of design review that's required for projects. There's subjective design review, which is outlined in 155412, and then there are objective design standards in 155312 and elsewhere in the code. And subjective design review is a discretionary approval by the design review committee or by another decision-making body, whereas objective design standards are ministerially approved by planning staff during the building permit process. So for example, there's a subjective design standard that an overall, the overall project design enhances Eureka's unique character and distinctive sense of place, whereas an example of an objective standard is no blank walls fronting a public street 10 foot by 10 foot or larger. And state housing law has a very specific definition of objective involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the applicant or proponent and the official. So the design review committee, they have five members. They're required to have professional experience in a design-related profession. They have meetings on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, and they review applications for design review and for creative and master sign permits. The exception is if other discretionary permits are required, then our code dictates that all permits are acted on together by the highest review authority to save time and money. So for instance, this development at Second and E, it needed a coastal development permit, conditional use permit, and design review. So the city held one public hearing at Planning Commission for all of those approvals. And it didn't go to Design Review Committee. It went to Planning Commission. Back the last time we presented, we looked back at data for the past four years. So this data is a little old now. It's from June 2019 through May of 2023. We found 59 design review projects that went to hearing during that time, and 75% of them were heard by the Design Review Committee. 15 required other discretionary permits, and so they went to Planning Commission or Historic Preservation Commission. So when is design review required in our inland zoning code? Subjective design review by a review authority is required for new buildings and building additions, adding 30% or more to the existing floor area in multifamily residential and mixed-use zoning districts. Here is a map of the affected districts. But we just recently amended the code, city council amended the code in 2023 to add an exception for projects with four or fewer residential units, including mixed-use projects with at least 2/3 of the square footage designated for residential use. Design review is also required for wireless telecommunications facilities, which is our code's weird way of talking about cell towers, and any exterior modification to a street-facing facade. Sorry, a pedestrian, any exterior modifications to a street-facing facade, building facade located on a pedestrian-focused frontage. So we have streets in our downtown and Henderson Center designated as pedestrian-focused frontages. And if somebody wants to do anything to a building-facing facade, with some exceptions, they have to go to design review in those areas. There's, the code includes seven subjective design review standards for design review related to surrounding context, pedestrian environment, architectural style. I just wanted to point out, it doesn't dictate an architectural style. It just wants buildings to demonstrate a coherent and successfully executed architectural style, articulation of visual interest, materials, safety, landscaping. So when Design Review Committee or any other review authority reviews design review, they're applying these existing rules, these written subjective design review criteria to a specific case. And so there, it's called a quasi-judicial role because they're acting like a judge. And they determine if the project meets those written approval criteria that council has adopted. If so, they approve it. They could meet it with conditions. They can conditionally approve. Or if they feel like it's inconsistent, they deny. And so just to walk through the permit process for subjective design review, staff gets an application. We don't deem the application complete until we've determined that it meets all the objective code standards. So we have checklists that we review, and we work with the applicant to get it consistent with our code, the objective standards of our code. Then we put out a referral to other city departments and agencies that might be interested in the project. Then we write a staff report. For quasi-judicial decisions, it's really important legally to have written findings linking the evidence, bridging the analytical gap between the evidence and the standard of review. So we write detailed findings as to why the project's consistent with all seven of these criteria that we recommend to the review authority. Then we mail and post notice at the site. We mail notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the project site. And then it goes to public hearing, and the review authority takes action both on the design review and on SEQA, because any discretionary action by the city triggers SEQA. And then, sorry, California Environmental Quality Act. And then after that happens, there's a 10-day appeal period. So if Design Review Committee acts, it can be appealed to the Planning Commission, which can in turn be appealed to city council. When all that's done, the applicant applies for a building permit. And then during the building permit process, if they want to review, they want to modify anything that has to do with the design, like landscaping even, there's a question of whether they might have to go back and start the process over again. And this costs, the application fee is $950. It definitely costs the city more than this. I think this fee was based on like four hours of staff time to write a staff report. And I have to say, it takes multiple days to write and review these staff reports. So one of the questions that came up the last time we talked was why might an applicant dislike this approval process? Additional time and money. It triggers SEQA. If you don't, if you can't find an exemption that fits your project, an environmental document is tens of thousands of dollars. It's a lot of money. There's the ability of members of the public to slow down your project or derail, or there's uncertainty of subjectivity. You have to prepare really detailed designs as part of your submittal, and your designs could meet the objective standards, but then you could be stuck having to redesign your project and the expense of that. And it hinders adaptive management during construction. So a lot of people have an architect who designs their project, and then they get to construction with a contractor, and all of a sudden, a lot of things are changing. And so, again, during that period, that four-year period, we had 11 housing projects that went to design review. Five of them had to go back to design review a second time for a modification once they got into the building permit process. So that's 75% of the original price, and it's the whole process over again. Another thing that's frustrating people about design review are the limitations on design review. There's limitations set by our inland zoning code that council could change. These are self-imposed. It says, "Design review is intended to address only aesthetic considerations, not otherwise regulated by the zoning code. When conducting design review, the review authority may not require a modification to a project feature that complies with mandatory development standards. So for example, if a project complies with the minimum setback requirement, the review authority may not require an increased setback as a condition of design review approval." So our code has like a maximum height, a minimum number of parking spaces, a minimum setback. They can't, Design Review Committee can't mess with any of that with their approval or conditions of approval. They can only deal with aesthetic things that are not otherwise regulated by the zoning code. Separately, there's limitations on design review set by state law. Particularly, the Housing Accountability Act prohibits the local government from denying, reducing the density of, or making infeasible housing development projects consistent with objective written standards. So like I said before, the seven subjective design review criteria, they're subjective, so they can't be used to deny a housing project. Also, if you're dealing with an affordable housing project, there's even additional state laws that don't even allow us to perform subjective review at all. There's this streamlining ministerial process that applicant can invoke if they have a certain percentage affordable in an infill area, and they meet certain requirements. And at that point, we cannot do discretionary review, even if they're on historic property. We're limited to objective design review for these projects. So this is really a topic that's coming up all over California right now because of this evolution in state housing law. And where it's coming from, from the state, is frustration with local governments denying housing projects that meet all local zoning requirements. The city, we write our own rules for what's allowed where, what the setbacks and height can be. And so there's frustration that projects that are consistent with those written rules are still denied. And there's also a frustration with the lack of predictability with subjective standards. You, not being able to know just by reading the rules as a layperson what is expected out of you. So in short, the Housing Accountability Act does not wrest control from local governments so much as require them to proceed by way of clear rules adopted in advance rather than by ad hoc decisions to accept or reject proposed housing. And so like every year, there's all sorts of housing legislation and, I wrote what I was going to say. "The term 'objective standards' appears in a wide range of state housing laws and is likely to continue to appear in future bills. Far from a guarantee of local control over a project's design, subjective regulations actually reduce the local government's control in the face of state housing laws, which often allow only objective standards to be applied." And for that reason, many local governments are buffing up their objective standards because they're realizing there are certain situations they're in where they're not allowed to use their subjective standards. And so if they don't have any objective standards, then they have nothing at all, that they have no local control anymore. So some of the options, one of the things I was asked, I believe of me, was to talk about options for changes to the design review process. I think part of it is that all these state housing laws have limited what we can do. And so part of it could be education of committee members and the community more about all these limitations on design review. When you get noticed about a project within 300 feet of your house, you expect to be able to go to the, and talk about whether that use should even be there when that's not in the parameters of the Design Review Committee. They're not approving a conditional use permit. They're looking at like aesthetic facade stuff. And so that's frustrating to people. And then another option is having the Planning Commission assume the Design Review Committee's role, only allowing the Design Review Committee to approve design review or maybe just give guidance, exempting all housing projects from discretionary subjective design review or removing subjective discretionary design review altogether and bolstering our objective standards that are reviewed and approved administratively. Also, this is something we did with sign permits. So we used to make everybody who wanted to do a sign go for subjective design review. Now we have sign standards. If you meet them, you get an administrative sign permit. If you meet them, you get an administrative sign permit without having to have a public hearing. If you want to deviate from those standards, then you can try to seek a creative or master sign permit with a longer discretionary process. So that's a route we could take more generally with all design review. And I'm sure there's a million other options that I'm not thinking of. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Director Kenyon, Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Director Kenyon, for that presentation. I appreciate the review of some things you've covered before and some some clarification. I have a question about safety. You said that one of the design review criteria is around safety. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, it's safety through environmental design, basically, but I can pull out the exact language.
And while you're looking at that, am I right in understanding that's one of the subjective criteria?
"The project promotes public safety and minimizes opportunities for crime through design features such as property access control, placement of entrances, fences, increased visibility, and features that promote a sense of ownership of outdoor space."
And is that one of the subjective criteria?
Yeah, that's one of the seven subjective criteria.
And then the, so I understand correctly, the council sets the these criteria, like we
Correct. You adopted them, yeah. They used to be much more subjective and this is, you know, was a lot of work to get to this point where there there's more guidance in them.
And if they're only aesthetic considerations, then how does design review talk about the effects on other buildings around? So like, you know, whether or not it fits the neighborhood architecturally or whether or not it's a thing that looks like it should be there. But when you're talking, I mean, because we're talking about housing, we're talking about multi level buildings. We're talking about shading other properties, things like that. Where does that come in?
That's a struggle to know what to do because it says the scope of design review. You may not require a modification to a project feature that complies with the mandatory development standard. But then so you're supposed to minimize adverse impacts on neighboring properties when possible. So they have to think of aesthetic ways to minimize impacts on neighboring properties. So what that leads me to is thinking about when like how aesthetically it fits in to the neighborhood. And if your whole neighborhood's circa 1890s, maybe it's about how your building looks in relation to those. I don't know, but it's it's got to be limited to aesthetics, whatever that impact is.
Could this be like position? I'm thinking about apartment complexes where they, you know, deliberately put the the entrance or the driveway in such a way that people are kind of driving in to park or, you know, so it doesn't look like a big thing from the outside. It looks like a long house. But then once you get back in the property, you realize it's multiple units. Would that be an aesthetic consideration, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, all of it's aesthetic. It's just really difficult. Some of some of the considerations you can't, based on this scope of design review section, they're limited because if they're, if it's related to an objective standard of the code, they can't touch it. So they're struggling with this. But yeah, but our our code has objective standards. That parking has to be, like if you have an alley, it has to be via the alley. You can't have parking between your building and your street. So design review couldn't, committee couldn't come out and say, we want the parking to be placed in front of the building.
Okay, they can't counteract something that's already in place. God, thank you. That was just a for instance, not a specific thing. That's all for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloche?
I'm curious, speaking to, so I went, speaking to, since this is connected to the property that was brought up earlier, am I allowed to address that?
Councilmember, I'm so glad you brought this up. Because there is a planning commission hearing on the appeal on the Boone Street property next week, I would prefer that the council stay away from discussion of that matter. That matter could come to you depending on the outcome of that appeal. And so I would really prefer that you didn't discuss it at length now. It's not appropriate to do so.
Okay, then I'm gonna find a different way to ask this question then. The other developments in that neighborhood, I drove out there and took a look. How does, what are the rules that allow a large building to overhang to the extent that it did on that other property? What what gap is missing in our code?
Right, yeah. So our code has set a five foot setback standard from rear and interior side property lines. And we do have provisions for stepping the second floor back. And maybe that's just limited to the rear property line and and not, and so maybe that's something that you could resolve with the code and require setbacks. And then you could apply that rule. You could, you could require second, you could require greater second floor setbacks and apply that rule uniformly. So we could update our code to require a greater second floor setback.
A quick follow up.
Yes.
Second floor, are you talking about, so in a property that's doing ground floor parking on the ground floor, is that considered a two story property? If there's two stories above that or is that considered three story because they're including the parking underneath?
It's however we wanted to find it in the code. And we could say that you're required to have all, everything over 10 feet a step back. Like we could write it however we wanted to.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't ask that clearly. That's on me. What I meant was, if you say have a two stories of apartments with one story of parking garage underneath, is that considered three stories or two stories? Because two stories are livable, but it's three stories overall. How is that counted?
It depends on what standard we're talking about. I mean,
And it's not based on stories.
Based on, yeah. In the R, in the R two and R three in our multifamily zones, we don't have a limit on the number of stories. We have a limit on the height of the structure. Actually, that's how it is in all of our zones. Thirty five feet in R two and R three is is the height maximum set by the code that you, that city council adopted.
Thirty thirty five feet, okay. And so generally, they say 10 feet is a story. So it's about then three, three and a half stories. Thank you.
There's probably a definition of story in our code that I could look up.
I just am going off of people who are not going to understand zoning. What are they thinking when they look at it? It's that would be typically 10 feet is what they consider to be about a story, so.
Right, I thought you were asking me how we defined it.
No, no, sorry. I was I was trying to kind of get a visual of like how that's and and also if, when someone has a parking garage on like ground floor and then, you know, maybe two more levels like.
There is a, there's this other state law that I'm going to talk about when I come back with the Gulches and Greenways ordinance, which is the Housing Crisis Act, which prevents us from reducing residential capacity until the act expires, which it's set to expire in 2030. So if we wanted to change any of our rules and the change could potentially reduce residential capacity, that would be problematic. We would have to then, at the same time, increase residential capacity elsewhere. So if we wanted to change a rule at this point, under the Housing Crisis Act to, like if we wanted to now reduce our 35 foot height limit to 20 feet, that would reduce residential capacity. We couldn't do that unless we upzoned an equivalent amount of of property with a, with with increasing height elsewhere. So the state said it that during this Housing Crisis Act, like you can only like ratchet up density. You can't go back with your rules.
And then to get back to your stories versus heights, you know, a lot of our older architecture, you may have two stories that are 40 feet high. So I mean, yes, 10 feet is typically the standard, but some of our older vaulted ceilings higher, you know.
Yeah, in our pedestrian focused frontages, we require the ground floor to be higher, to have a higher height.
Any further questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. And I'm curious in terms of some of the options, you know, specifically option number five, if, you know, I mean, really, I feel like we're kind of in the area of between objective standards and form based codes a little bit. Or do you feel like that's something that staff, you know, that you've been moving toward in terms of, you know, creating standards that also talk about how the use impacts the community and things like that? From an objective vantage point?
Yes. Objective standards and form based codes are kind of meshing together.
That's what I was thinking. And so, you know, I mean, I know that that's actually, well, you know, in in planner spaces, like some of the the more actually inventive ways of actually yielding results for walkable communities and because you're able to look at kind of the the science of planning versus, you know, personal ideas which change over time. Is that, is that something that you feel like has been creating more, I guess, efficiency in terms of moving projects forward and also working towards, you know, just just kind of how those projects are situated in the community as well?
Yes, I, there, certain objective design standards that we have adopted have been huge for how development occurs in our community. Like the standard that you don't build your parking lot between your building and your street. You put landscaping there and you tuck your parking lot behind. I mean, that's had an incredible impact on our development. But yeah, you, there's, like, the Association of Area Governments just put out this like compendium of objective standards with all of these free editable graphics. And they talk, they did a, an economic impact analysis of of the standards. And it's like, the more standards you have, right? And certain ones will add cost to a design, like second floor setbacks will add cost. And it talks about that and analyzes it. And it analyzes like also the design impacts of those objective standards. So this is something that's getting a lot of attention and analysis right now.
Cool. And I mean, thank you. And then just a quick question, I know we're not there yet, you know, and I know we're doing some work around neighborhood naming and things like that. Do you anticipate, you know, potentially in the future, there could be, you know, kind of form based codes or things that might even accentuate different nuances in neighborhoods?
Yeah, our our inland zoning code, which was comprehensively updated in 2019, it already has, I mean, before we just had office residential districts throughout the city. And we already now have like a Henderson Center District. And I could, we're already thinking like the library district's going to be its own district instead of just a generic. So I think we are getting more particular about these different areas and their character.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Moulton?
Anyway, giving you direction necessarily? I just want to say that I appreciate the move towards more objective standards. And I'd like to take a further look at the specific criteria that are set, like second story setbacks or can't think of another, the other example, right, the second. But I'd like to take a look at the nitty gritty of the design review criteria that was set by previous council and just continue moving towards checkboxes and measurements and data driven stuff that we could, that everybody can understand ahead of time. It sounds like a really good way to move forward.
I think if we're gonna be giving direction, we should take public comment next.
Okay.
And just for anybody who is looking to comment on this, you know, keeping in mind that we're talking about a direction for the design review going forward writ large, not about specific projects. So with that.
Thank you.
I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
So we shall open up public comment. Is there anyone here? Welcome, Mr. Petty. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Most of you know me, I'm Chuck Petty. I was on the historic preservation commission for 27 years. And in that role, we were the design review committee for listed properties on the local register. So I'm quite familiar with design review standards and how this all works. I would like to know why the council was asked for this report on options for the future of design review committee in the first place. I am deeply disturbed by this report submitted by Kristen Kenyon suggesting five options for the future of design review up until including complete elimination of the design review committee. That really bothers me. I'm here to voice my opposition to any changes to design review beyond the first proposal to further educate the design review committee members on their role. The city needs design review on all appropriate projects to ensure no adverse effects on the surrounding neighbors and neighborhoods. I've been told this may have been prompted by a recent decision and further discussion tonight verifies that by the design review committee at their May 8 meeting to deny a multi unit housing project at Garland and Booner Streets adjacent to two other multi unit housing projects fairly recently constructed by ACGC. I went back and viewed the online video of that May 8 meeting. And the members of the design review committee had a lengthy discussion, asked many questions of staff to make sure that they were making a decision appropriate to the limitations of their roles on the committee. They were clearly advised by Kristen Kenyon and Melissa Smith about this project and of the limitations on their decision making process. A motion to deny the project was passed and was based on the applicant ACGC's complete unwillingness to address the effect this project had on neighboring properties. The finding used by design review was that the proposed development will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. This project was found to be detrimental. A simple request to flip the multi unit structure so that the 20 foot high wall wasn't blocking all the neighbors' windows and windows weren't looking down on their property was completely ignored by the applicant. ACGC can easily come back with a slightly modified project and almost certainly gain approval. Back to the main topic at hand. The first part of the staff report references council goals and strategic vision, namely, removing obstacles to development, creating a business friendly environment, and having flexible and accommodating regulations. All noble goals are meant to achieve additional housing needs as mandated by the state. But removing any form of design review would create a free for all with no restrictions on design and no need to notify neighboring property owners of their their projects, thereby denying our citizens their rights to comment on effects on their neighborhood. I believe this is wrong. I urge you to reject all proposals beyond the first one that was to educate design review committee members on their their scope.
Thank you, Mr. Petty, for being here. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else in chambers? Come on up.
I need you to explain a couple of things to me. First off, as
So first of all, before you start your time, this isn't a time for questions and answers. You can certainly give comment, but Ms. Kenyon won't be answering questions for you at this point.
So as I read it, basically, it says to approve a design application, the design review committee must make the following findings. The proposed development will not be detrimental to public health.
Please direct your comments to council.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Or safety or welfare or material injurious to the properties and improvements in the vicinity. And I think we pretty much established in this case, this is happening to us. We are having money basically.
So I'm sorry again, but this is a general topic. That topic that you're discussing will be discussed at the planning commission meeting coming forward. So I appreciate your comments.
Well, then I guess I'm gonna have to wait, right?
You can speak to what was spoken about, just not any specific project.
It's real tough for me right now.
Yeah.
Real tough. I think you kind of all got the idea. I'll be back here on the plane.
I appreciate you being here. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Raylina?
And one more time, I would just offer that this is about the general design, not any specific project. Okay, who's next? I'm sorry.
Raylina?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for bringing this topic to discussion. My name's Raylina Crickston. I work as the property development director and community liaison for ACGC. I would like to express my full support to remove the design review committee's oversight for commercial businesses and housing projects. for commercial businesses and housing projects. Streamlining the development process is crucial to addressing the housing needs of our community, particularly the missing middle housing that serves working couples, families, and other Eureka community members. Removing requirements for businesses to improve frontages also lessens the mental and financial burden the Design Review process imposes, making it both fiscally and logistically easier to make small intangible improvements to the city. By eliminating the Design Review Committee's discretionary role, we can reduce unnecessary delays and bureaucratic hurdles that have hindered housing development. This change would not only expedite the approval process, but also provide clarity and predictability for developers like ACGC, enabling us to move, or enabling us to more effectively contribute to meeting our city's housing demands for well-made and well-maintained housing. It's essential that we align our local regulatory framework with state laws and focus on objective standards to ensure fairness and transparency in housing approvals. This approach will support sustainable growth, enhance affordability, and foster more inclusive community in Eureka. From the agenda summary, option five, which removes design review for commercial and residential businesses, is the clear option to remove one of the many hurdles to development and simultaneously enable businesses to improve and develop with less cost and bureaucratic review. I believe it's important to include commercial frontages in the exemption from design review as the standard described in option five. Small businesses in Humboldt and Eureka are in a fragile state financially, and lessening any financial burden, as well as mental tax, on having to submit to the Design Review Committee will be a benefit to small business owners. Let's prioritize practical solutions that facilitate responsible development while preserving the character and integrity of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anybody else?
I see no one else.
So seeing no one, we will bring it back to council for comments. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. Yeah, this is an interesting discussion. I will say that I see a role for design review. I, I think about when I drive through Eureka, and there's, like, Victorian, Victorian, 1970s apartments, you know, designed on a napkin, Victorian, Victorian, you know, like, that's the reason I think we have something like design review, is to prevent that kind of development. Or, you know, it's just, there's so much of that, that it's important that we have that consideration, you know, like, trying to match what's historically there, you know, keeping our downtown unique. And, I mean, if we were to go with just Planning Commission and say, I wanted to develop an old town, and I'm gonna put up a box that's three stories tall, it'll match all of the objective criteria set forth, you know, by the Planning Commission, by, by the rules. It'll be ugly as all get out, but it'll have 40 apartments and, and a ground floor of commercial. None of us would like that. I think the community wouldn't like that. So, to me, the committee has a function, a purpose, and just needs education. I think that is, and I, and I, what we have in our, in our report, or, or in the agenda, if you, you know, click on the link, it, option one, like, we should have the ability, if the education doesn't work and they're, and we feel like they're overstepping, then the ability to remove people that are hindering progress should be available. So I'm in favor of option one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, similar to what Councilmember Bauer had to say. I, I think it, you know, it's kind of interesting, because the first time we addressed this, I can't remember when that was, February or something like that. You know, I would say, kind of, the pendulum has swung for me a little bit, because initially I was kind of thinking, like, yeah, do we, you know, this just seems like we're adding another layer of, you know, issues in, you know, bureaucracy. I don't think that's true, as I've had time to kind of really consider this. I think it's important. I think it serves a purpose. You know, I live in the neighborhoods that, that Councilmember Bauer just talked about, where we have, some of, some of my neighborhood is literally so iconic that it appears and searches all over for Victorian homes. I live off of Hillsdale, and it's in murals, it's in all these sayings. And then we also have, on that same street, some really unfortunate-looking apartment complexes. So, and, and it's funny, because we all kind of talk about it, you know, in our neighborhood, that it just, it looks very out of place, and it didn't need to, but it does. And it's not the end of the world, because it, you know, provides housing, but it does look funny. And I think, you know, not saying we can't do it, but saying, uh, yeah, it's not the end of the world for us to have some kind of standards. I also, you know, have one of those properties where something is three feet, a 10-foot fence is three feet from my dining room window. So we keep our windows closed all the time. So there are things, you know, and so I understand that. This does impact people's quality of life, so I'm gonna put on, typically, I am very in favor of database decision-making, and I tend to be a numbers person. But I'm putting on my artist hat for just a second. There's a lot of data about, there's a lot of data and research, right, about how interior environments affect us mentally and physically, but also how exterior environments affect us mentally and physically. There's fascinating research that was done around Cabrini-Green in Chicago and some of these areas where they got rid of brownstones and put up these large complexes and different things without any respect to how people are going to interact with each other and crime sword in those areas. And they were like, you know what, this disconnects people. Anyway. And I could go on a big old thing about that, because I find it really fascinating. The point being, our, how our city looks, our physical environments, how these things, we can build high-density things, but we can do it in good ways. And I think we can be conscientious about some of this stuff. And I think this group serves as somebody who can make sure that we're kind of doing that a little bit. You know, and without, so I, I'm in favor of option one for the same reason that Councilmember Bauer had outlined.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano? Thank you.
I prefer option five, which is not, uh, it was kind of misquoted earlier. It's not eliminating design, not by staff, it's not eliminating design review, but eliminating the subjective component of design review. Ultimately, I think that the, the subjective component is not actually necessarily a useful aesthetic tool even. That's, you know, my personal feeling about it. You know, I, I really like form-based code. I think it actually does a really great job. And, you know, as well as the, the objective design standards in terms of implementing, basically taking the study of planning and of architecture and saying, like, what, over time, yields pleasant environments, good places to live, you know? And so I think that that gives a great tool for developers, for architects, and is more transparent than subjective design standards. You know, I do think there might be a bit of a, you know, I'm kind of curious in terms of, like, maybe there's a six-month period or something in which we maybe look a little more critically at some of our objective standards and see if there might be opportunities for furthering some of them, such as, you know, like, number of windows, or maybe, you know, first floors that are, you know, 12 feet tall. I don't, you know, I'm just making things up right now. But, but, you know, I think that there could be some opportunity to, you know, look at what's working really well in Eureka, and even in some of these new developments that have come forward that people are loving. I think I said enough.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Director Kenyon, could you put the, all five options back up? Oh, you closed out.
I closed out of it, sorry.
Okay.
It's on page 685.
I would like to speak briefly to my motivation, which, without getting into details, which is that if something can get, if something can get so far in the process that it is, that there's such contention about it, and it gets to this point of subjective review, I feel like there should be an objective standard to catch that earlier. And that's why I'm in, I'm in favor of option one. We'll start there. And I think we should be finding loopholes and finding things that are not popular or that are causing problems, that are not covered in our objective standards, and adding those in. That's where my thought process was, coming up with this, is that why are we getting, why are some things getting through to a certain point when they should have been in a checkbox five steps ago? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. I'm, I'm in favor, I would say, of the fourth and fifth options. Just, as it was stated, very similar reasons as Councilmember Castellano. Anything that gives us the opportunity to hurriedly build housing under forms that we would know what they would, what the standards would be. Where, where I take concern would be the lack of notification that would go to nearby property owners. That, you know, if not directly to a committee of choice, then us very particularly, because to have something there one day, but then start construction the next, would be considerably alarming for anybody, property owner, renter, otherwise. I can understand the, the stances, at least with option one, working on education with the committee. And maybe that's something we do in the meantime, while we bolster our objective standards and move towards potentially dissolving the, not the Planning Commission, sorry, Design Review Committee. Just for the sake of, and I think you laid out here quite well, with the growing awareness of social equity and housing issues, just as it's related to housing the most number of people that we can in an equitable fashion. I also do like the fact that with number five, that there is still the opportunity for creativity with, I think, as you describe it, for discretionary creative or master, at least alluding to the sign permit process, but there'd still be something there that might allow for that sense of creativity.
Anyone else? I actually have a couple of thoughts on this, but go ahead. City Manager Slattery, and I'll give you my thoughts after.
Well, the way that I read it and the way it stands now would be that what we would do is, there's not a formal direction or anything, would be that we move forward with just education, unless something comes up in the future.
I was gonna actually ask Councilmember Moulton to maybe clarify, because what I heard was two for option one and two for option five. I, I was not as clear on the direction from Councilmember Moulton, and that might help us decide which direction is, is the council's pleasure here.
Since I brought this up, and I'm a tiebreaker, sorry, go ahead.
I was thinking, it sounds like it's pretty unanimous on one, and then there's a desire to talk more about what our objective standards are now and how they might be strengthened.
That, I, I agree with that completely. I, I am not in favor of going to all Planning Commission or exempting all housing projects, getting rid of design review entirely, certainly not in favor of adding commercial anything to any exemptions. I do think that there's a further need for education and on the scope of the authority with the members as well as the public. And I think we need to be bolstering those objective standards if we're finding ourselves in difficult situations.
I would agree with that, and I just want to just put my two cents in. You know, I feel like the education is a really big piece of this. Changing the standards to conform with neighborhoods is, I think, is very important. Beauty, I know people don't, may not think this, but beauty makes a difference in your neighborhood. If you're living in an area full of habit trails, where you've got all these houses that look like, you know, same little boxes with little windows and, you know, chances are good, the quality of life is not going to be that great. But when you have something beautiful that you can be proud of with landscape and all of those things, it really makes an impact on people's well-being. And so I'd like to see us move towards, however we can, looking to conform with neighborhood. Like, that place over on, I, I shouldn't probably say where it is, but I'm going to. That pla, because Rob Homland actually put this out in a presentation. But that place on Hillsdale, that is the biggest eyesore you've ever seen. Right next to that beautiful Hoyer's, and then you go down the street and there are these fabulous Victorians. And right there, you got this box with ma, I don't even think there are windows on the side of Hillsdale. So I would like to do whatever we can to avoid that kind of ugliness for our city. Uh, and I think education with design review is first and most important, because people can't change if they don't know what they need to change. It's just my opinion. Was it off the whole time?
No.
Oh, okay. That would have been okay, too. So, um, council membership on the Chamber of Commerce, two by two. So we need to make a recommendation. We do have one who has resigned from that committee, and we will be, need to be moving forward with somebody different. I guess I'll call you Assistant City Manager Powell. How would you like to proceed with this?
Currently, Councilmember Fernandez is our alternate. I don't know if he's interested in becoming a primary. If so, we would then need an alternate appointed.
Great.
And he has indicated that he would like to move into the primary role.
Thank you so much. Is anyone interested in being an alternate? Is, is the meeting during the day?
I could be an alternate.
Yes, then I can't, so.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano, because she just doesn't do enough for our city.
And then, Mayor Bregel, there is a discussion about maybe time constraints and that maybe Councilmember Fernandez and Councilmember Contreras Deloche could swap maybe something. Do you want to do the harbor?
Yeah, it would, if, if taking the, on the Chamber of Commerce as the primary, I'd be willing to step back in the role that I have on the Harbor Commission to an alternate. And I believe, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, you may be interested?
Yeah, I am, and I think I'm, I'm already the alternate on that. But yeah, absolutely, I would be interested in that, so.
So we didn't, do we need to have a motion and a vote, or is it just a recommendation?
Just, this will suffice. Thank you.
Moving on to future agenda items. Who has one? Councilmember Castellano?
I, I guess it's an agenda item. I think it's just establishing a ad hoc committee related to marketing. I don't know if we need, I, do we want to bring it on the agenda, or do we want to? I'm interested in that. Are other folks interested?
You say that again, please.
An ad hoc committee of two people for marketing, to kind of go down the rabbit hole for marketing.
We'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Seeing no one. City Manager Reports, City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Chief Stevens is going to provide a report on traffic enforcement and staffing. And welcome, Chief Stevens. And just to check.
I was just noticing that it's 9:19 right now, so unless you think you can do it in three minutes, no, I'm just teasing. I'm wondering, can we get a motion to extend the meeting?
Move to extend time to 10 o'clock?
9:45?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Second. Uh, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. It's all you, Chief Stevens.
Somebody, staff helped for sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Recently, I was asked by the Traffic Safety Committee to do a presentation on the department's efforts in the realm of traffic enforcement within the city of Eureka. Unfortunately, that meeting was counseled, canceled, and this came open, so I thought I'd present the same information to council tonight and the public. First, we need to talk about staffing levels at the department right now to really understand the efforts that we're trying to put into traffic enforcement or the perception that we're not doing traffic enforcement within the city. Currently, patrol is still working on a 12-and-a-half-hour emergency schedule and has been for over a year. We briefly went back to our 410, 312- We briefly went back to our four-ten, three-twelve, but due to vacancies, the amount of, uh, overtime that was creating, it was no longer feasible to do that. The vacancies that we currently have are being filled by members of our Drug Task Force Team, our Investigations Unit, and then our Community Safety Engagement Team to help alleviate some of the overtime, uh, on personnel that are having to come in on their days off. We currently have forty-eight allocated positions within the department. That includes all positions from myself down to the last officer we just hired. So we currently have nineteen patrol officers that are handling calls for service within the city. One of those is out on injuries, we have eighteen actually on the street. We have four patrol sergeants, uh, one is out on injuries, so we're currently working with three, but we will be making a promotion in July, uh, to be able to fill that additional watch with a sergeant. Currently have four detectives, three CSET members, and a school resource officer and one Drug Task Force agent. Some good news is we currently have forty positions filled. While that sounds like we're only eight down, eight of those are currently in the academy. Uh, two will graduate in, uh, June, and then, or July, July, and then six will graduate in December of this year. So it's a, you know, it's probably this time next year before we see the six on the street. So while the future looks better, it's currently, it's not going to affect our staffing any. Uh, we do have five additional, um, cadets or applicants and backgrounds. Uh, two of those are lateral officers, one of them should be starting in about two weeks, and, uh, one of them is currently in, uh, background still, just passed his poly today. We're trying to expedite his process, but unfortunately, he is coming from out of state and his post certification has expired, so he's going to have to go through the three-week course, and that's not till September if we can't make it in three weeks. Uh, so it might be a while before we see him. And then we have three recruits and backgrounds already for the next academy that starts in January, trying to prepare and pull in as many people as we can and have them within our department so we don't lose them to their agencies. In two thousand twenty-three, the department was awarded the Officer of Traffic, Traffic Safety Grant of an amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this grant runs from October of two thousand twenty-three to September of two thousand twenty-four, and has to do with traffic enforcement operations and participate in national traffic safety campaigns to send officers to relevant trainings. Since being awarded the grant, uh, we've currently, even though we have the short staffing, have been able to do the following. Uh, National Walk to School Day in October of two thousand twenty-three, maintain a DUI BOLO program that notifies officers about repeat DUI offenders, and sent one officer to advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement training. We've also been able to conduct five DUI saturation patrols, uh, conducted five primary collision factor enforcement operations, conducted four distracted driver enforcement operations, and two pedestrian and/or bicycle enforcement operations. Those operations have resulted in a hundred and fifteen traffic stops, total citations written of thirty-six. We made five arrests, we towed seven vehicles, and issued a total of, uh, forty-eight violations of the Vehicle Code in the State of California. We've completed sixteen of the sixty-nine funded operations, uh, a total of a hundred and seven and a half hours have been worked, and we've sent one officer out of the six, uh, that we can send so far to training. When you compare what we did in two thousand twenty-three, uh, from January to December, we conducted twenty-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six traffic stops, issued five-hundred-and-forty-five citations, and warned nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-nine violators. In two thousand twenty-four, for the first five months, uh, like I said, this presentation was supposed to be presented earlier this month, so we stopped at June first, but we've already conducted a thousand ninety-four total traffic stops within a department, issued two-hundred-and-nine citations, and warned eight-hundred-and-seven traffic violators. And then in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, we arrested a hundred and thirty DUIs, and then in twenty-four, in the first five months, we've already arrested forty-seven. So, uh, the short of it is, even with the short staffing, we're staying consistent with the amount of enforcement operations that we're doing, the amount of enforcement that we're able to do, uh, traffic stops conducted, and ensuring that our roads are safe by trying to remove as many DUI drivers that we can. Um, I know these numbers are probably up already by, probably close to a hundred cited, or, um, at least traffic stops this month. I've listened to the radio all day, I hear them out there working. Um, so they fluctuate just based on calls for service and who's working, but, uh, we continue to, to try to put an emphasis on traffic enforcement, especially in those areas where we receive complaints and address those community, uh, issues. However, still staffing is what the biggest piece is that stands in our way of, uh, truly being able to be out there and, and meet our goals with the OTS grant in a timely manner. I believe we will meet our goals, we will, and we're already applied to be funded next year, but it's just going to take the entire year to be able to see those results. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have questions, just?
Councilmember Maltin?
Hi, thank you very much, Chief. I'm, I'm very happy to hear that enforcement is online, and appreciate all the extra time that officers are working to make up that gap. I know that's, uh, uh, can take a toll. And those folks come through the academy all right. I just had a, a question about the difference between, uh, you had a statistic for total cited and total CVC cited? What's, what's that, what does that mean?
Sure, so, uh, we may like cite the drivers, what total cited is, we've cited, of the drivers we've contacted, we've cited a certain number. Of those drivers, some of those had multiple violations that they were cited for, so the CVCs is the California Vehicle Code violation, so sometimes a citation may have multiple CVCs on it, which then in turns, that number goes higher than the total number of traffic stops.
That makes sense, thank you.
Some people just don't mess up on one thing, so.
Any other, Councilmember Castellano? Oh, I'm sorry, I, actually, Councilmember Fernandez was first.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I can, I can begin to infer what DUI stands for, I'm curious what the BOLO portion stands for.
Be on the lookout, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a warrant list that comes out that specifically is created for people who have, uh, been arrested for driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol in the State of California and failed to appear in court.
And then, I'm, I'm curious, and you might not know this off the top of your head, of those CBC violations, do you know how many of those were fix-it tickets or could be remedied?
I, honestly, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's not something we generally issue as a lot of fix-it tickets.
Okay.
If we're doing enforcement, especially under OTS, because fix-it tickets have to be for like registration, headlights out, taillights out, things like that. Where we're looking for primary collision factors, we're stopping people that are running stoplights, stop signs, uh, speed violations, those type of, what the state says causes collisions in the State of California, we're trying to reduce those.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Castellano, thanks for your patience.
No problem, I'll be quick. Uh, that's a lot of DUIs. Um, does, do we have above-average DUIs in our, in our community, do you know?
Um, I don't know above average. I will tell you that that number is definitely affected by the staffing and our ability to enforce the DUIs or look for DUIs.
Right, there's probably more.
I can remember, there, there, I mean, that's not even a, a fraction of what's truly on the street that could be dealt with. Uh, I remember officers, when we had different staffing levels, that would make that many arrests a year for one officer. Um, so, it's, yes, driving under the influence is a major issue in our community and in society altogether, and we're only touching a fraction of those violators with the arrests we're able to make. And generally, a lot of these, or several of these, will come from traffic collisions that we're already responding to and investigating as part of a call for service, not from a proactive traffic stop.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I'm just curious, it seems like, uh, careers in public safety, you know, are, it seems like we're struggling to, to fill. What do you think the issue is, and how, how do we get more people that want to, you know, serve?
Yeah, I definitely think we've seen, I mean, obviously societal issues, um, issues within the nation creates anxiety to be, want to be in law enforcement. We, we go through these pendulum swings where, you know, why would I want to be a cop and be yelled at and screamed at, I didn't do it, right? It wasn't me that did it. Um, but the pendulum will swing back and forth, and we see the pendulum swinging back now. Our, the number of applications that HR is getting for the positions throughout the department are increased, and, and we're seeing higher level numbers, however, the quality is not there. And I don't mean this as a, a negative against anyone, but to be in the, in the law enforcement profession and to get through a background process, you've had to live a life that allows you to pass those certain milestones to get to the opportunity where I can offer you a job. And what we are seeing is we're getting more applications, but the applications are coming from individuals who have not been able to maintain a lifestyle that allows me to hire them without lowering the standards of the police department, and potentially even not even be able to hire them due to the standards of the state. Um, so that creates an issue for us. We, we like to see the numbers go up because it does give us obviously more people to look at, but it's sometimes it's the background, it's the quality, and I am not just willing to lower the standards of our department and for our community just to fill seats in a car.
No, thanks for that explanation, appreciate it.
Mic drop. Any further? I'm just curious, this is kind of a silly question, how many of those DUIs are, um, repeat offenders, do you think?
Probably a handful a year that we'll get, that I've had multiple DUIs.
Interesting.
Yeah, whether they're recent or whether they're on their criminal history or something that's happened over a, a span of, you know, a period of years, but yeah, there are probably multiple on there.
Interesting, okay. Well, I really appreciate that report. I wish it was earlier in the meeting where more people were actually able to see that and realize all the great work you're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And this brings us to council reports. One thing I neglected to say that I really want to say is I, um, in my mayor's reports, is I just want to give a shout out to former council member Marion Brady. You know, that, that council member has been, hasn't been a council member in quite a long time, and I see her out there at R. and Myrtle regularly, weeding the, the area where the horse is, and I just really appreciate that even though she's not on council and has no one, you know, she still probably has an investment in the city, but no, you know, no real role, if you will, in the city. She still is out there on the regular, making an impact on our city, and I hope that we can all remember that and be, be a Marion, in that regard.
We just ordered her five yards of, uh, wood chips for her.
Wonderful. I just so appreciate her, I always have to snap her picture, uh, looking for good things in our community, right? So with that, we're going to start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, I'm going to be super quick. Um, I attended the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting, uh, Friday Night Market, Eureka Main Street meeting, um, the Humboldt Community Services District two-by-two meeting, and continued to meet with folks about housing weekly. And, um, I'm going to go to, just want to give a plug for the Juneteenth festivities this coming Saturday at Halverson Park.
Right.
And there are some festivities beginning tomorrow, so happy Juneteenth, everyone.
Wonderful, thank you for that. Councilmember Maltin?
I have no travel to report. Um, I also attended Friday Night Market. Holy cow, it's gotten really big, and it was so packed. I love that. Um, I'm also looking forward to Juneteenth. I'm from Texas, and it's a really big deal there. I was surprised when I came to California, nobody knew what it was, so I'm delighted that that, uh, milestone in our history is being celebrated across the nation.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, no travel to report, and the bulk of my committee meetings take place next week, so, uh, just looking forward to Juneteenth tomorrow, I believe it's kicking off in Arcata, and then of course, Saturday here in Eureka.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Got a couple of meetings. Friday Night Market is insane, uh, you just can't believe what, what it's become. Um, I'm glad everybody's attending, and I want to just congratulate all the high school graduates. That was super fun, seeing kids that I, you know, basically were babies, seeing them graduate makes you feel old, but it's also like, gives you hope when these good humans are, are, are moving on to hopefully, you know, bigger and better things. It was, congratulations to all them. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Uh, no travel to report and, uh, no, uh, specific, or no, um, what are they called? Planned meeting, yeah. Um, but a lot of discussions with just, uh, lots of phone calls from people, which I think is great because it means our community is engaged and reaching out, and so just a lot of conversations with community members. Um, and then also, um, uh, some, uh, appointments downtown with some of our local businesses and just talking with them about some concerns they have, and then Friday Night Market is like amazing. It's my, it's my area, and I can walk there from where I live, and I love it. It's just great. We have such a fun downtown, so, there's my report.
Thank you. Well, with that, I would like to appreciate you all for a robust conversation tonight at our meeting. With that, we are adjourned.